We'll call this meeting to order. Please rise. Oh, yes, oh, yes, this county commission meeting of Sumner County is now open pursuant to adjournment. God bless this country and this honorable commission, Mr. Chairman.
Our pastor tonight had a spider bite accident and is in the, is in the hospital, so, in the ER right now, so we want to keep him in our thoughts and prayers, but let's bow our heads. Lord, as we gather together tonight, we thank you for the time that we have to serve our county, and we're thankful to have citizens gathered to share their opinions on the decisions that we're making. We pray that you will give us guidance and wisdom beyond our own as we vote tonight, and we pray, oh, Lord, for a county in a time of transition, Lord, we pray for those that are departing office and those that are coming into office, that your hand will rest upon everyone and will guide us towards your truth and wisdom. We pray all these things in Christ Jesus, our Lord. Amen.
Please don't mean to pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your government, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's check our roll.
Each commissioner, please record your presence.
We have twenty-three members present, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kemp. Okay, okay. Given the fact that we have one empty seat or unfilled seat from District One currently, a majority tonight is twelve votes, a two-thirds majority remains at sixteen votes, so anything requiring a two-thirds vote will require sixteen votes, anything else that just requires a simple majority will require twelve votes. Mr. Mansfield?
Yes, sir. Our sitting house is basically around these seats available to the commission, not around the tenements, so the quorum, the majority vote is thirteen.
No, that's incorrect. We've been doing tw-. Seats filled. All right, you've got your agenda and consignments, there's a motion to approve?
The chairman.
Hang on, we've got to approve before you take amendments. Motion made to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Commissioner Nipper, Mr. Ring.
Yes, sir. I'd like to remove twenty-two zero eight zero five from the agenda and refer it back to the legislative committee.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Ring, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mansfield. All right, there's been a motion made to, did you mean refer or defer? Defer is fifty percent with the, okay, defer. All right, so motion's been made and seconded to defer to, Mr. Mansfield, are you good with that, with defer?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so motion's been made and seconded to defer the District Thirteen opening to the Legislative Committee that will meet again next month with the new commission. All right, Mr. Mansfield, do you want to speak on that or are you on something else?
I'll go poll. Consider.
Okay, let's just wait, let's do this first and then we'll come back to you. All right, let's vote.
The amendment's on the board, each commissioner, please record your vote. Receives fifteen affirmative votes. Leah, is that approved?
Yeah.
Okay, approved, all right. Okay, so twenty-two eight dash zero five is being deferred back to the Legislative Committee, so we will remove that from the agenda for tonight. Mr. Mansfield. Yeah. Hang on, just one more second. There you go.
I was going to remove twenty-two oh eight dash seventeen, twenty-two oh eight dash twenty-five, and twenty-two oh eight dash twenty-eight from the consent agenda, I just had some questions on that.
Let me, let me just make sure, so seventeen.
Twenty-five and twenty-eight, so item number eight, item number sixteen, and item number nineteen.
Okay, gotcha.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right, so we will move twenty-two oh eight dash seventeen, twenty-five and twenty-eight to the Budget Commission, so let's see, or to the Budget Committee's report. All right, I see no one else in the queue, let's vote to approve our amended agenda. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, got a no from Commissioner Wright, any other no's? Commissioner Graves, any other no's? All right, so by a vote of twenty-one to two, the agenda is approved. All right, your minutes are in your packet, is there a motion to approve our minutes? Motion made by Commissioner Kruger, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Sullivan, Mr. Goode.
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, no one else on the minutes, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, we've got, yeah, Mr. Goode.
You might, as from, from the chair's position, let everyone know that, that is here for oh five, that is not on the agenda, so there'll be no reason to speak or even be here, unless they just want to sit in the crowd.
Yeah, we will just say, per our previous practice, public comments are connected to an item on the agenda, okay, so if you had signed up to speak on twenty-two oh eight dash oh five, the call for the special runoff election for County Commission District Thirteen, that is no longer on the agenda tonight, and so you're welcome to speak on anything else on the agenda, but we will not have public comments on that item. With that said, is there anyone else that wishes to sign up for public comments?
Stay on.
Yeah, I'm going to do that in a second.
Mr. Chairman, can you give me those numbers?
Yes, sir. Twenty-two oh eight dash seventeen, twenty-two oh eight dash twenty-five, and twenty-two oh eight dash twenty-eight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. All right, I want before, without objection, before we do public comments, we've got quite a list of public comments, we're going to move our certificates of recognition and do those first, I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Holt, our county mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, tonight we have a resolution honoring the American Legion Gallatin Post Seventeen Patriots Baseball Team. If you'd like to come up here and bring your coaches and teammates, that would be great. We're going to give them just a minute, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
We have a question. If you, if you have a question, because you're going to have a few of these teammates, they're going to come up here. So.
Anthony, I'm going to, Mayor Holt, I'm going to tell everybody down before I turn it back to you. I'm going to ask everybody to quiet before I turn it back to you. All right, I'm going to ask if we can, if we can refrain from talking out in the, out in the citizen area tonight while we're deliberating, we want to, this is a very special group of young men, and we want to honor them tonight. Mayor Holt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to shorten this just a little bit because we've got a busy agenda tonight. We have a resolution honoring the American Legion Gallatin Post Seventeen Patriots Baseball Team, whereas the American Legion Gallatin Post Seventeen Patriots Baseball Team led by coaches Austin Miller and Ty Martin have completed their regular season of play with remarkable record, and whereas the American Legion Gallatin Post Seventeen Patriots Baseball Team played with great spirit and through their diligent efforts have brought honor to themselves, the American Legion Gallatin Post Seventeen in Sumner County by their outstanding performances, and whereas this great team played with pride and dignity through their diligent efforts and have demonstrated the benefits of hard work and dedication, now, now therefore be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in regular session on this fifteenth day of August, 2022, that this body does hereby congratulate and commend the American Legion Gallatin Post Seventeen Patriots Baseball Team for their outstanding season, and be it further resolved that this resolution shall be spread on the minutes of this body, and the clerk is to furnish a copy of this resolution to the American Legion Gallatin Post Seventeen Patriots Baseball Team. Congratulations, and somebody needs to move.
Motion made by Commissioner Chuck, or is there a second by Commissioner Foster? All in favor, say aye? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
So I'm going to, I'm going to give a copy of the resolution to the post, and congratulations, young men, keep up the hard work, we're proud of you, you are truly patriots. Thank you, would you like to say anything?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Y'all have a great evening.
All right, we will next go to a resolution honoring our director of schools, Dr. Dale Phillips, that's retiring at the end of the year, he is not able to be here tonight, is there a motion to approve this proclamation honoring him? Motion made by Commissioner Goode, is there a second? Commissioner Schale, Commissioner Sullivan, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously, and we will get that resolution to him. All right, and then we have proclamations honoring each of our departing county officials and county commissioners, is there a motion to approve those resolutions? Motion made by Commissioner Hyde, seconded by Commissioner Becker, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, make sure I got any, Commissioner Ring.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is a resolution declaring the week of September seventeenth as Constitution Week, whereas September seventeenth, 2022 marks the two-hundred-thirty-fifth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document, its memorial, its memorial anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas Public Law nine-one-five guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States declaring September seventeenth through twenty-third as Constitution Week, now therefore be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in regular session on this the fifteenth day of August, 2022, that this body does hereby proclaim the week of September seventeenth through twenty-third as Constitution Week, and urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities with which that privilege involves, be it further resolved that this resolution shall be spread on the minutes of this body, and I make that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Ring, seconded by Commissioner Becker, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, now we will jump back up to public comments, I would like to offer, we've got twelve judicial candidates, it's a big decision for the county, and so what I would like to do is as we do that, before we, before we vote, start voting on judicial positions, and I know we've been all over the place, some of the judicial candidates have asked, I'd like to give each of you, because a lot of you have signed up for public comments, I'd like to give each of you two to three minutes to come up and address the commission, and then we will do that in just a minute, though, so I'm going to run through, our public comments have been altered due to the number of people that had signed up to speak on the District Thirteen commission seat, so I'm going to call names and ask if you, you're still speaking on agenda item, if not, we will move on to the next one. Let's see, Stephen Puckett. Okay, which, which issue are you speaking on?
The one for Judge Carter.
The what now?
The one for Judge Carter.
Okay, all right, and then, let's see, Mr. Jim Young will be on deck, and Stephen, you will have, let me just go ahead, before you go, Stephen, give me one second.
Yes, sir.
Let me remind everyone of the rules, we've got a lot of people that haven't been to a commission meeting before, our rules for public comment operate like this, we ask for good decorum, we ask that you address your comments to the chair, not to the audience or to individual members of the commission, we ask that you refrain from cheering so that everyone may be able to hear, we also ask that you not criticize any elected officials, citizens of Sumner County, or institutions of the county, if you do, then I will rule you out of order and ask you to move on, after a couple warnings like that, I hope to not have to do this tonight, but I would ask our sheriff's deputies to escort you out, don't want to do that, want everybody to follow by the rules, want us to have a very good public debate, we've got a lot of important things left on the agenda, but we also want to do so in an orderly fashion. Speakers, if you look at the TV in the back of the chambers, there is a five-minute timer that Mr. Kemp will start, and that will give you your time to watch for your public comments. Mr. Puckett, if you can start, state your name and address, then you can begin speaking.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, my name is Stephen Puckett, I reside at two-two-eight Summers Ferry Road, apartment eight-twenty-one, Hendersonville, Tennessee, as I mentioned on my way up here, I am speaking on the appointment of the legendary Mike, Justice Mike Carter, I know we all dearly miss him, he was a good friend, and thinking about who, you know, all the choices to, to try to fill his shoes, I may, I was thinking about the wisdom he imparted on this commission when the position was created, actually, and the first piece of wisdom I know he would, he would want of you, is to hold a special election as soon as the state law will allow, because ultimately we want the people to have the final say on who is representing, is handling their cases. The second piece of wisdom is, I'm not quite sure if it was taken when he offered it, but at the time when this position was created, he had offered the idea, the suggestion that the second, second runner-up in the last D-one election, Division One election, be the appointee, now he happened to be the appointee, but, and like I said, I'm not sure if the commission took his advice, but the last election we have held is the Division One election, general election, which Mr. Tyler Templeton came in second, and he ran as an independent in the same tradition that the late Mo Taylor and outgoing Commissioner Graves adhered to, of not, not running under a party banner, and in today's day and age with the Supreme Court, and both state and federal, and the lack of confidence that something, that the political environment has created, someone who has not ran under a party banner could help to strengthen that confidence and maintain that confidence, it seems it be a tradition that maybe needs to come back for a little while, so, thank you, and God bless, and I got to go to work.
Thank you, Mr. Puckett, Mr. Young, Mr. Frank is on deck. Mr. Young, if you can share your name and address, then you'll have five minutes.
Yes, sir. It won't take me five minutes, my name is Jim Young, I live at one-eleven Hidden Way Court, Hendersonville, Tennessee, I'm here tonight to talk about item number twenty-two oh eight dash oh eight, which concerns payroll for the libraries, if you recall, back on the eight, the eighteenth of July, item number twenty-two oh seven dash fourteen got fifteen votes, which meant it needed to have sixteen votes, but they didn't, so they said, well, it'll come back for a vote again this month, well, for some reason, the libraries were pulled out, and I just wanted to give you a little overview, so you know kind of what went on. We, on the eighth of July, the Budget Committee met and voted to approve the amount of money for the libraries, and they approved that budgeting unanimously, then on the eighteenth, at the commission meeting, it got fifteen votes, and we, everybody assumed that it would be coming back this month, then we had a, and the Finance Director actually sent a letter to the libraries and several other people, saying that it would be on the agenda this month, the, our libraries were held out because when they came in and did the wage survey, they did not include any part-time employees, so we felt like that, we have sixty-two employees in the library, thirty-two of which are part-time, so, with the four percent raise, they're making ten dollars and ninety cents an hour, and you see people asking for help all the time, and they're paying a little more than ten ninety, as you well know, so we would like to have everything tied into the survey, what we did on the survey, we went by, back and took everybody in their job, and we gave an eight percent decrease over the minimum, the actual market minimum, we are eight percent less than the survey showed, the Budget Committee recommended that we go back and have the survey team look over the figures that we had given them, and so we did, and we had a virtual meeting on the twenty-eighth, and they agreed with what we had done, and we turned it back in, and we thought everything was fine, and then we found out tonight that it's been pulled, and so what I'd like to do is ask that someone would add that back to the agenda as it was on twenty-two oh seven dash fourteen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young, Mr. Frank, and I have Mr. Stocks on deck after Mr. Frank.
I'm Paul Frank, one-fifty-one Daystar Court, Gallatin, here to speak on behalf of Mr. Russ Edwards, who's running for judge, and I thank you, gentlemen, ladies, for giving us this opportunity, as I said, I am a retired minister, retired in 2020 after forty-eight years of ministry, I moved here in nineteen seventy-four with my wife and our two children, and the reason I bring that up, because I think it's important for you to realize that we have some longevity here, and we really, really do appreciate this community, and because of commissioners and the Department of Education and superintendents and things like this, our daughter and son both completed K through twelve, our son is now, because of the fine educational program, the, well, I'm drawing a blank, I'm sorry, he's the principal, why should I say that, he's the principal of Merrill Hyde Magnet School, and our daughter is a teacher at Station Camp, and also an adjunct professor at Vols State, along with the educational system, I've seen our public works, our fire departments, our police organization, our judicial systems grow, and be a constant influence on the growth of this community, which is important. Now today, I come to speak on behalf of the man who has established himself well in our community, I knew Mr. Edwards as a young man when he was a member of a Boy Scout troop that met in our church, St. Timothy Lutheran Church, Hendersonville, I lost track of Russ during his high school and his college years and law school, but when he moved back some nineteen years ago to practice law with his father and his brother, I was reintroduced to Russ as we both serve on a Project Twenty-two board, Russ has made a huge impact on Hendersonville, not only because of his law practice, but because of his investment of time and energies with various people and organizations, he's a strong member of his local church, and serves as a student life group leader for his Young Men's Class, he's the president of City Alderman for Hendersonville, a board member of the Rotary Club, as well as on certain boards and directors for nonprofit agencies, I say all this to remind you that he's not only well-versed in law, but he's enriched the life of this community as he works alongside by side with people such as you and me to make this community better, those of you who know Russ would describe him as a man dedicated to serving people, a family man, wife and two children, a man who's fair, honest, and above reproach, a man of compassion, a man who strives to seek out justice, he has many other fine qualities, as you well know, and I feel his putting his name in for serving as judge is his way of giving back to the community for a community that raised him, some of you may have already made up your minds as who you think you would like to vote for, and I appreciate you doing due diligence, those who have not decided, I hope you will consider the description I've given you of this my friend Russ, a possibility for this very important position, Merriam-Webster defines a judge as simply a person who forms an opinion through careful weighing of evidence and testing of premises, George Washington was once quoted as saying, "A judge is a person who administers justice, justice which is the firm pillar of good judgment," thus I, George Washington speaking, have considered the first arrangement of the judicial system as essential to the happiness of the country and to the stability of its political system, my friends, I hope you'll consider Mr. Edwards as the person who will continue to establish and administer justice, and continue to bring stability and add his strength to our present judicial system, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Frank, Mr. Stocks, and I have Michael Bevins on deck. Is Mr. Stock still here? Okay, we'll go on to Mr. Bevins, and we'll have, I think, Mr. Corson on deck.
Good evening.
If you'll state your name and address, then you'll have five minutes.
Yes, my name is Michael Bevins, one-twenty-eight Bluegrass Drive, Hendersonville, I'm here today to, in honor, to give my support to Tyler Templeton for the appointment of General Sessions Judge, what I like most about Tyler is that he is an independent, he will be bipartisan, he's got a lot of experience in the position, and I know that Judge Mike Carter personally endorsed him for the past several years, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bevins, all right, Mr. Corson, are you speaking, which agenda item are you speaking on? Okay, I guess not one, okay, all right, Mr. Catherin, Marty Catherin from Westmoreland, are you still in the room?
Yes, sir.
Okay, which, which item are you speaking on?
Judge Carter.
Okay, come on up, yes, sir. Yeah, if you'll, if you'll state your name and address, then you can begin, and we will have Judge Hunter afterward, or immediately after.
My name's Marty Catherin, Westmoreland, Tennessee, twenty-two fifty-five Lambert Drive, I was the Honorable Mike Carter's Court Deputy, Mike Carter was a compassionate man, he loved his job, he loved the community that he served, there is a lot of candidates that's out here tonight that wants to fill those shoes, you may be able to replace that judicial seat, but you'll never replace Mike Carter, and that's a- And that's a big job. There's some candidates on there that, that I believe are capable of doing the job, but there's one or two or three or four that's been in this capacity before that's in here tonight, and they've done the job. I'm not going to endorse anybody, because I, all of my friends that's, that's in here tonight wanting the job, like I said, you'll never fill his position, you might fill his position, but you'll never fill the shoes completely. But I'm just commissioned to remember something. We need somebody that's young and can carry on his legacy and can go on for multiple terms. We just don't need somebody that's going to be there for one term. And I hope and pray that y'all will do that and take that in consideration. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. All right, Judge Hunter? And we'll have Donald Linville up on deck.
My name is James Hunter. I live at 1004 Harris Drive in Gallatin. Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Choosing a candidate who will make a good judge should be deliberate, thoughtful, without prejudice, and in a sense, you are being called on to use those same qualities as a good judge would make a decision in court. You have many, many good candidates tonight. I want to tell you about one particular, in particular, that I have known personally and professionally for 40 years. Alan Emling graduated from Hendersonville High School. He graduated from the University of the South, Swanee, where I went to college and graduated. He graduated from the University of Tennessee Law School. He was in honors fraternity at Swanee. He was captain of the football team, made all conference. He was on the track team. He was on the lacrosse team. He was an NCAA Scholar-Athlete nominee. He is a Rule 31 family law mediator. He's a member of the Sumner County Bar Association, the Rutherford County Bar Association, the Tennessee Bar Association, the Association of Trial Lawyers of America, the Association of Criminal Defense Lawyers, the Association of Civil Defense Lawyers, they don't call it civil defense, but it's Association of Defense Lawyers. He was the interim director of the paralegal program at Ball State. The original director quit. They called on Alan. He accepted the position temporarily. He had to set up the program, get it started, and he taught there for 20 years. He was a finalist for the Mary Catherine Strobel Volunteer Award for providing free legal services for the nonprofit adoption agencies in Tennessee. He won the award of Heart of Agape, which is a very well-respected and recognized adoption agency in Tennessee. He has set a special judge for Judge Weecraft, Judge Jones, myself, Judge Brown, Judge Hatcher, if you can remember back that far, Judge Carter, and Magistrate Howard, back when David was a magistrate before he became juvenile judge. He was a panel member for, at the General Sessions Judges' Conference one year for indigent defense parties that come to court. He served at the Appalachian Service Project for 20 years, for those of you that are familiar with that project. He was named Attorney for Justice by the Tennessee Supreme Court from 2014 to 2021. He was awarded 10 Best Client Satisfaction Award from 2015 to 2021 by the American Institute of Family Law Attorneys. He was awarded by the Attorney in Practice Magazine, one of the top 10 family law attorneys in Tennessee from 2020 to 2021. I've tried all kinds of cases with Alan over the years as co-counsel, where we've represented the same client as opposing counsel. And when you're in the heat of the battle in a serious case where the consequences of the outcome are very great, you learn a lot about yourself and about the people you work with. I regard Alan among a group of attorneys with the highest integrity, the keenness of skills, and Alan is one who never forgets common sense. Alan is a person I like to call a person who is the voice of reason, even in the most stressful of times. This is what you want in General Sessions Court. You don't win all of these awards without having those skills and those abilities. He's been tried, he's been tested, he's come out of the fray with much, much experience that he will be able to use for people coming to our court here and for our community. Thank you.
Judge Hunter, if we could just, before you sit down, as many of you know, Judge Hunter has served Sumner County so well for so many years, and we're deeply appreciative, and we don't often get the chance here to honor you for your service, but you've got so many recognitions and awards. But I think, you know, you mentioned earlier about compassion, and I can say, you know, with, with drug court and everything else, that you've been exemplary in the compassion and the common sense that you've shown to the citizens of Sumner County. And I would like to ask that, I know this is public comments, but let's, let's give Judge Hunter a round of applause for
Just very briefly, I went through this same process when I was first appointed in 2003. Judge Jones retired. Some of you are still here after all these years. And it's an interesting process, but it's a very good process, and I've got to say, this commission is very good to their judges. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge Hunter. All right, Mr. Linville, Chris Callahan is on deck. Mr. Linville, if you'll state your name and address, and then you'll have five minutes to speak.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of a good friend of mine, a friend that I've had the honor and the privilege to work with for the last four years, Bill Whalen, in consideration for judge tonight, General Sessions Judge. You know, Bill, one of the things about Bill, every day when I leave the office, usually there's not many parking, or not many cars in the parking lot. Bill is always one of those cars. He's still there usually when I leave. Bill is hardworking, his work ethic is amazing. You know, he's a team player, and he's an important resource, you know. I speak, I speak about Bill tonight, you know, in his role, I've greatly really enjoyed the last four years working with him. I would certainly hate to not work with him anymore, but I do know that Bill will be good for this county. He has helped us at the Diocese with efficiency, effectiveness. It's in a much better place than it was eight years, or 12 years ago when he, when he came to work there, much better financial shape. Now, you might ask, well, if you don't know, he's our, our chief financial officer. And you may ask, well, what, what about the law? Well, Bill has experience in, in the law, too. He's tried a ton of cases, and, you know, when Bill shared with me that he was interested in, in running for judge, I said, Bill, we, we need, there's somebody we need to talk to. I took Bill to meet my dad. My dad is, you, you may ask, well, what do you know about being a judge or anything of that nature? My dad is actually the longest-serving General Sessions Judge in the state. So I knew it would be important for Bill to talk with him. As they talked and, and my dad shared things about the job, you know, and, and he got to know Bill, my dad told me while Bill was there and then afterwards, he said, Bill will be great in this job. He has the skills, he understands the law. You know, most importantly, Bill cares about people. You know, he's tackled a lot of complex legal subject matter in his days in legal counsel, but most importantly, he cares about people, and he's a problem solver. And I believe that he will find ways to make the General Sessions Court not only try cases, but make the court more efficient and effective. I couldn't give a higher recommendation than Bill Whalen. I appreciate your time. And I also wanted to mention before I leave, he's a man of faith and integrity, which I believe is extremely important. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Linville, are you at 1102 Spearpoint Drive?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. We got, we got, we got. Thank you. All right, Mr. Callahan. Mr. Callahan, if you can state your name and address, then you can begin speaking, and then Kurt Jankey will be up next.
Good evening, Commissioners and everyone here. My name is Chris Callahan. I reside at 102 Lake Forest Point in Hendersonville. My family has lived in Hendersonville for over 30 years. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Bill Whalen for General Sessions Judge. Commissioners, I, I want to thank each of you for all you have done for our county, helping our community navigate so much change. I'm really concerned about the rapid change and the challenges that face our General Sessions Court and its future ability to best serve our fellow citizens. And that is why I stand here before you tonight. General Sessions Court is high stakes for the thousands who appear before it. I know this firsthand. My family has appeared before it twice, including a case involving an assault of one of my children. Who serves as judge really matters. I've known Bill Whalen for over 40 years. We met in college. Honestly, at first, I didn't appreciate that Bill, who was studying in the College of Arts and Sciences, would come over to the College of Business, where I was studying as an accounting major, and take accounting classes just for the fun of it and get the highest grade. Indeed, Bill excelled in math, accounting, and physics, then business administration, when he earned his MBA at Stanford University, one of our nation's top business schools. After we both became CPAs, Bill and I worked together for a number of years in community service in Detroit, Michigan, training and guiding nonprofit organizations to be better at managing their resources. Afterward, Bill went on to earn his law degree in Washington, DC, while I pursued graduate studies in public administration. Bill has had a diverse and stellar career as an attorney at the federal, state, and local level. Over decades, he has served as counsel to both plaintiffs and defendants, including matters similar to General Sessions, like landlord-tenant disputes and criminal cases. And like in General Sessions, he has managed an extraordinary workload, literally thousands of legal cases. Over these many years, I've admired Bill's incredible work ethic and dedication, his honesty and integrity, his judgment, his keen intellect, and his creativity. Back in our days assisting nonprofits in the city of Detroit, Bill created new ways to expand our taxpayer assistance program for the elderly, which received national attention. True to form, decades later, he's helped create ways to expand affordable housing in metro Nashville in his legal and business leadership roles at the Diocese of Nashville. Bill knows how to lead and manage change. He played an instrumental role in legal affairs when Nissan made a dramatic change, relocating its USA headquarters from Los Angeles to Nashville. More recently, Bill has led all financial and legal matters of the Diocese, enabling the Diocese to manage unprecedented growth and change throughout the 16 schools, 60 churches, and numerous charities and community organizations that the Diocese serves in Sumner County and across middle Tennessee, doing this while also teaching the next generation of lawyers at Vanderbilt University Law School and serving on a half a dozen nonprofit boards. As a person of Our Lady of the Lake, I greatly appreciate how Bill led decisions at the Diocese that have ensured the most economical use of its financial resources. I personally know Bill as a man of faith, character, and honesty, a person you can trust, confide in, and take counsel from. In fact, I and others have turned to him for legal advice, and it has always been sound. He has helped friends, neighbors, and others with their legal challenges, whether civil or criminal. He has helped me on real estate contract disputes and other areas of law that arise in General Sessions Court. Bill's advice and analysis of legal or dispute situations always look for alternative perspectives. He looks at situations from all angles, both sides, and comes up with novel approaches and solutions. He always seeks to uphold the law with firmness and with fairness. He has excelled in all he has done, school, work, family, and church. In closing, just as each of you has helped our county successfully navigate change, our next judge needs to be someone who ensures General Sessions Court adapts to change and ably handles the many challenges and opportunities that come with change. Someone with unique qualifications, someone whose experience and credentials are more than the usual or the status quo, someone with a lot of wisdom, someone extraordinary for these extraordinary times. I fervently believe that someone is Bill Whalen. Commissioners, I generally, genuinely appreciate the opportunity to share my remarks with you on the occasion of such an important and lasting decision that you make this evening. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. All right, Mr. Jankey.
Mr. Chairman, I have a foreign order. I hear it.
No, sir.
I have a foreign order that your own rules, according to the definition of what your championship requires, permit to what is being discussed, cannot be known, is not known, and is redundant. You are redundant with your information. We've got it now. What is your order, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, no, you're out of order, sir. All right, let's go, let's roll on. Mr. Jankey, come on up, please, sir, and you will, if you can state your name and address, you'll have five minutes.
My name is Kurt Jankey, 522 Quorum Hill Road, Castilian Springs. And for those in the post office, 37031. We've, I came to talk about two items dealing with the budget You won't find them on there because I'm asking you to put in one hour of time for someone to either come on out and examine the Planning Commission sign that's been up on the Avery Trace property. Either the Avery Trace development is going to Planning Commission or it's not. I didn't think it was. The sign is still up. I thought about taking it down, but I want to try to still be friends with the Sheriff Department. So, but that's the county's business, and if you can figure out one hour's pay for someone to go on out there and figure it out, whether the sign is supposed to be up or not, I'd greatly appreciate it, because there's a whole gaggle of people out there that are interested in what's going on with the Avery Trace property. Number two, Hilton Lane. Hilton Lane is also out there in Castilian Springs. It's on the east side of the proposed Avery Trace property. I noticed earlier this evening, you had an emergency meeting dealing with some kind of flooding in Cotton Town. I'm quite sure Cotton Town is very important, and if I was living in Cotton Town, I would be out here speaking to you about Cotton Town. But since I'm over in Castilian Springs, I just thought I'd mention it to everyone here, as we've mentioned to the Planning Commission and other commissions at various times, there's a thing called Hilton Lane Flood. Now, if everybody can hear that, I'd appreciate it, because now you can't walk away and say you've never heard it. Hilton Lane Flood.
Okay, Mr. Jankey, you're not speaking on an agenda item.
Huh?
You're not speaking on an actual agenda item tonight.
I'm asking for money in the budgets, just like there was an emergency fund, emergency meeting earlier today for the flooding in Cotton Town?
Right, but that's not, your, Castilian Springs isn't on the agenda tonight.
I have two. It's not on the agenda.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. But thank you.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate your time.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Hilton Lane Flood.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jankey. All right, Ms. Waller, I believe that you were speaking about the District 13 Commissancy. Is that correct?
Close.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I would like my foreign order that you are now applying your tactic of obfuscation that extends down.
Okay, thank you, sir. We're going to move on on the agenda. Sir, you're out of order. Okay. Your veteran's service report is on your desk. What's that? Yeah, that's it for public comments. We will have more. If you signed up, there will be more public comments on the zoning. If you signed up on an item that was on the agenda, I went by what was on there. Most have signed up for the 13th District, and that was removed.
I didn't want to talk about Judge.
Okay. You can come on up. Mr. Baker, if you wish to speak about something else. Yeah, that, if you're signed up for one of the zoning, there are separate public comments. A zoning hearing requires a separate session, so we will hear those public comments when we get to that area. Okay?
Mr. Chairman.
No, no, sir. No, sir, you're out of order. You're out of order. Ms. Daniels, if you'll state your name and address for the record.
Your denial of my civil rights attorney rule will proceed.
Okay, Ms. Daniels, go ahead.
Okay. Okay, my name is Joanna Daniels, and I reside at 152 North Shadow Haven Way, Hendersonville, Tennessee, 37075. And I am talking, and I wanted to comment about the appointing of the judge. And I wanted to say, I am from California, and I moved here in 2018. And I moved here because I wanted to go to a constitutional conservative state. And I was like, yes, I'm going to Tennessee. And then I also wanted to come to a county that I really felt was very conservative and was along with my ideals. And, and I found Sumner County, and I was so excited. And so, I've come to love your, your Tennessee Constitution. I've read it a few times, and I just love it. And I've come to love Sumner County. And we just had a major election, and I know that we have a lot of new people coming in. And I wanted to say with great respect that for those of you that have served and, you know, are going to be parting ways, I want to say thank you so much for taking up the challenge and being a public servant. So I just want to say thank you so much. And the decisions that you have made are impacting the county and are going to be long-lasting. And, and the voters have also spoken that they want to have some new people come in. And that's not a bad thing. That's not a bad thing. It just is what they wanted. And a judge is a very important decision, extremely important decision. And what I really love about Tennessee is the southern hospitality and the respect that is really valued here, and the respect that is given to people in office and people that are leaving office. And I really value that, coming from California. And I just really appreciate that. And I really feel that a judge is a really important decision that is going to impact for a long time this county. And I think that a large respect to show the new people that are coming in is to allow them to make that decision. Because they have chosen, I think it's sixteen or seventeen, new people to come in. And that's, that's a, that's a large number. And it's not a disrespect, you know, that, that they chose someone else. It's just a different decision. And so I'm asking you, as a newcomer to Tennessee and someone that is enjoying the southern hospitality and enjoying the conservative, constitutional conservative, that you guys show a respect tonight and defer the decision to the new, the new commission that's coming in so that they can, one, take on that responsibility. That's a huge responsibility, and honestly, you know, I think it's something that is, is something that the new people should, should be able to make because it is going to be a lasting decision. And so I'm asking you that your, one of your last decisions as a respectable commission is to defer the decision to the next commission. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Daniels.
Kevin Baker, 424 A.B. Wade Road. For eight years, I've come up here, and most of the time, there's not anybody else in the room. So it's, I appreciate this because we've done battle month over month over month. And I harbor no ill will or feelings to anyone in this room. We had different sides of opinions, different viewpoints on things. In fact, Mr. Chairman, I, I couldn't help but notice in the, in the awards, in the original posting, your name was not included in, in the, I don't know if you caught that or not, but if you go through the original thing that you sent out, yours is not there. So I'm just pointing that out. We disagree on things, but first of all, we're Americans. We're Americans first, right? And we stand for certain things. We're Tennesseans second. We stand for certain things, okay? Most of the people that died in the Alamo were, Alamo were from Tennessee. We stand for things. If it wasn't for y'all, I wouldn't have had a job for the last eight years. Sumner Taxpayer Alliance, okay? It, it kept me off the streets, and God knows what kind of trouble I could have gotten So I thank you for that. And as we go forward, I'm still going to be here, you're going to still be here. I hope you come and contribute. We've had differences, but you bring viewpoints that we need in this room. Okay, we, we absolutely need that. And the last thing I'm going to say is, I was going to talk about the, the picking of the judge, but based on my, my historical record, if I named somebody, guarantee you that person's going to come in last. So I'm going to refrain from picking a name tonight. I just hope, I hope that you, you put the citizens first because for eight years, y'all came here and got paid. I came here representing you all, and I'll continue to do that. I hope to see some of you here with me. Thank you, and God bless you all.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. All right. Did anyone else that had signed up initially wish to speak? Okay. Yes, ma'am. Come on up. I'll get you, you'll be on deck, Mr. Baker. If you can state your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes.
Tina Tobin, 462 Gibbs Lane in Gallatin. And I'm speaking as a citizen of Sumner County and also a representative of Tennessee Liberty Network, their election integrity team. And I'm asking the commission to please reject appropriating one and a half million dollars for new voting machines. Our current voting machines, and the new ones, are made by a company called Microvote. Though you may or may not be familiar with them, but they've been removed from nine states. They've been removed from our neighbor to the north, Kentucky. And they've been removed from Pennsylvania and from North Carolina, who also had lawsuits against these companies. The biggest problem that they cite for getting rid of these machines is that they malfunction. Now, they have software and tabulators and just overall machine malfunctions. It's a terrible vendor. In fact, only two states use these machines anymore. There's Tennessee, and then there's Indiana, which is where Microvote is headquartered. Tennessee has had multiple, multiple problems, and even Sumner County here. We had years ago, a Portland city election that was affected by these machines. They couldn't retrieve their votes on election night. And here, recently, in our May primary, we had a machine that had to be shut down. It had to be fixed. A candidate's name was missing off of the ballot. Now, as far as I know, we still don't know how many votes were affected by that. And of course, since everything's paperless, we really don't have a way to determine that. And that brings me to why we're even considering new machines. And it's essentially the Help America Vote Act, which some of you might know as HAVA. They require a paper trail. But a paper trail should not be confused with any kind of a secure paper ballot. They're totally different, and this doesn't add any security at all. In fact, these new machines give us a receipt that's thermal paper, just like you would get from a grocery store. So it does nothing to affect the system malfunctions or the vulnerabilities. It doesn't correct anything. These machines are terrible, and essentially, the receipts that they print are difficult to read, especially for voters with disabilities. So we're making it more difficult for voters with disabilities, rather than making it easier for them to vote. And the thermal paper is also prone to ripping, smudging, fading, everything that makes it inappropriate to have any kind of an audit or a recount, which is essentially why we want paper in the first place, is to be able to do an audit or a recount. So the county, I know, they've used Microvote for decades. And I really believe, though, that despite that, we should take this opportunity, and we should examine why eighty percent of states that previously use these machines have overwhelmingly rejected them, and we should not be turning over more money to this vendor. The county election office has shown they are committed to accuracy. I spent ten hours with them on our August election in the counting room. I watched them count and recount, and they were very thorough. And I would hate to see that commitment to accuracy be undone by using these machines that have no accuracy, have multiple malfunctions, multiple vulnerabilities, when we know that just a single vulnerability can affect the entire outcome of an election and can compromise that election. So please, I ask you to vote no to spending one and a half million dollars on machines that are made by a vendor with a terrible track record. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Tobin. Ms. Baker. If you can state your name and address, then you'll have five minutes, Ms. Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Laura Baker, 424 A.B. Wade Road, Portland. It's been a long time since I've been up here, and I couldn't let go after how many times I have come up and complained and corrected and, and all kinds of things with you folks, and probably really irritated all of you to let this night go by and not say goodbye. And it's been an interesting eight years, as Kevin said. We've learned a lot, and we haven't gotten along on a lot of things. And for that, I'm sorry for the role that I may have played in some of that. I think it probably goes a little bit both ways, but tonight's not a night for that. I just want to tell you that God, I hope God blesses every one of you, that you go off into things that make you happy, that you feel fulfilled with what you did here. And I wish you all the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. All right, that concludes our public comments. We will have public comments on our zoning issues. All right, as I mentioned earlier, our veteran's service report is attached in your packet. We will move now to fill the vacancy for our General Sessions Judge for Division III. Before we did that, I just wanted to take a moment. We've got Kat and Kelsey Carter with us tonight, and...
And if you knew, if you knew Judge Carter even for a minute, you knew what compassion that he had for the citizens of Sumner County, how much love he had, and the deep commitment he had to public service. I don't know that I've ever worked or met anyone that maintained, no matter whether days were good or bad, he always smiled, he always shook your hand, and he always did his very best to do what was right for the citizens of Sumner County. So it's a very small token, but Kat and Kelsey just know that we, we loved your husband and father. We appreciate him, we respect him. His memory will live on forever in Sumner County, and we're so thankful for, for you and for being here tonight. So thank you.
All right, let me explain. We will give, we will give each judicial candidate three minutes to speak. Okay? We'll call, I'll call them up. You don't have to take your three minutes, but you're welcome to take your three minutes. And then, just so everybody's on the same page about the process, it's a little different. We did this when we actually appointed Judge Carter. But basically, what we'll do is, Mr. Kemp has a spreadsheet with all the names of the judicial candidates. We will vote by roll call by district. So we'll start with District One and go through District 12. Each commissioner will announce who they're voting for, if they're abstaining. And then, any candidates that do not receive a vote will be removed after the first ballot. In subsequent ballots, we will remove the lowest vote recipient until we get to twelve votes, which is the majority tonight. Okay, so that will be the voting process. If we get down to three, we'll put it on the board, and we'll be able to vote because we can use green, yellow, and red for the different candidates. Mr. Baker, do you have a question?
So in the previous time we've done it, the first round is zero and the lowest. So you're saying the first round is just zero?
First round, we're going to do zero. Yeah. Because that, to me, that would be the low.
In theory, it won't be any different, though.
That'd be the lowest. Yeah. Yeah, we're going to do it that way.
Okay.
Mr. Mansfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, yeah, I just wanted to, I've got a lot of emails from constituents, a couple dozen, just asking that we defer this for another month or so to think about it. This happened pretty fast. You know, it was dated last month. It seemed like there was an urgency, but I know that dockets are, are being handled every day. So just wanted to clarify that before this, this commission. You know, so these cases are being heard. There's not any dockets piling up. I, I only got the personal interview, I mean, about six of the candidates, and talked to them. And I know this is with so much of a volume of twelve candidates, I, I think it'd be a little more prudent to take a little bit more time, especially we have 120 days to fill this vacancy. And so I would move to defer this to the next commission.
Let me, I don't have a motion yet. Let me get a motion in a second, and then I'll, I'll immediately come to you to make that motion.
Okay.
Okay. So if you hang tight just for a second. Is there a motion to approve our resolution to appoint a judge to fill Judge Carter's position? Motion made by Commissioner Taylor, second by Commissioner DeWitt. All right, Mr. Mansfield.
So I would move to defer until at least September, and let the other new commission take a look at this and just give a little more time for public input and reviewing all the candidates, since it is such an important decision. I mean, this is technically, I've been told, almost like an appointment for life, because a lot of people don't like to run against a sitting judge, because I've heard lawyers say they feel their goose might be cooked in court if they do. So I, I just take it very seriously. And there's a lot of good candidates, and it's definitely a hard choice, the ones I've talked to. So I, I just respectfully ask that this, this body would defer this for another month and, and give us a little more time to, to think through this.
Okay. All right, so motion to defer has been made. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Hyde. All right. I see no one in the queue. So a yes vote is to defer this vote to next month. A no vote is to continue with our proceed, process to select a judicial appointment.
Motion to defer is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote.
With three affirmative votes, motion to defer fails to carry.
Okay. All right. Motion to defer fails to carry. We will now proceed. We will give each judicial candidate that wishes to speak three minutes. I have a list provided by Mr. Kemp in the order that...
That applications were received.
The order that applications were received. So Mr. Thomas Dean will be first, and then Mr. Russ Edwards will be second.
Do you need my name and address?
No, sir, I think we're good.
All right. Y'all have made it physically challenging, had to walk up from where the macro buses are, and then standing back is part of this grueling process that I did not expect. I'm sure that y'all know that General Sessions Court is ninety percent criminal. There's some civil, it's done on Thursdays. Criminal is Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday. So experience in criminal matters is crucial. I have experience in criminal matters. I have been an assistant district attorney for twenty-seven years.
Now, from the comments from the audience, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Dean, sorry.
I've been an Assistant District Attorney for 27 years. I've appeared in General Sessions Court regularly for all of that time. I have a basis of knowledge in the criminal process that I believe is unequaled amongst the candidates. I have roots in Sumner County. In a gathering recently, a friend of mine said, he sometimes greet people and says, "Do you have any kin in the ground here?" And somebody said, "What? Kin in the ground here?" Well, I've got kin in the ground here. My parents are buried here, went to school here, elementary school, middle school, high school, first two years of college at Vols State, the University of Sumner County, and got married here to my high school sweetheart. Sumner County is my home, and it will remain my home until I die. In the 27 years I have appeared in front of General Sessions Court and Criminal Court, I've appeared in front of three General Sessions Judges, Judge Jones, Judge Hunter, Judge Carter. I've learned from all of them, and I think that experience is something that's important. I have successfully prosecuted a lot of cases in Criminal Court, had jury trials, had a nine-day jury trial November of last year against an attorney that went bad named Andy Allman. We sent him to the penitentiary. That's good experience, but that's not General Sessions Court. But I have been there, thousands of cases over the years, preliminary hearings, bench trials, and everything else. Let me talk to you about victims, because I think something that that's important. Victims are the forgotten part of the criminal justice system far too often. When you're in law school, you don't get a class on victims. It's all about, hey, can you suppress this evidence? Hey, what can you do? Did the police do the right search? It's very defendant-centered. And that, you know, I'm for defendants' rights, believe me. That's, that's part of what DA's do. You guys may have just seen DA's as the, what's the guy in Law &amp; Order? Jack McCoy, right? Jack is always thundering around and hammering. He's the hammer of the state. The DA's office, district attorneys have to consider justice. It's not just put people in jail, except when necessary. There's, there's times a DA will get evidence in, and he'll look at it, and he'll realize it hurts him. This hurts my case.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Dean. Time's up.
I'm not, I'm not used to five-minute time. That's hard.
It's hard, it's hard on preachers and attorneys, Mr. Dean. Mr. Russ Edwards, Ms. Lila Kathleen Mitchell is up next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Mr. Dean has shown, a time limit is usually just a suggestion to attorneys, so I'm gonna try to stick to it. Good evening. My name is Russ Edwards. I would like to thank the Commissioners for your service and dedication to this great county. Thank you for your work in selecting a General Sessions Judge. I know this is not an easy task. The position of General Sessions Judge is a serious one, so the task at hand deserves serious, sober-minded consideration. No one wakes up in the morning wanting to grant an order of protection. Nobody wakes up in the morning wanting to put somebody in jail, and nobody wakes up in the morning wanting to evict somebody. But those are the decisions that a General Sessions Judge is gonna have to make on a daily basis. This position requires a serious mind and the right temperament to make these kinds of tough decisions. I have the right experience, knowledge, and temperament for this very important role. I'm a native Sumner Countyan, and I've had a private law practice right here in Sumner County for my entire 19-year career. I've been in Sumner County and other counties' courts during my entire legal career, and I've handled every type of case that could possibly come before the General Sessions Court on a daily or weekly basis. And I've sat as special judge for Judge Hunter and Judge Carter on numerous occasions. Teaching is also important to me. I'm a student life group leader at Long Hollow Church. I've coached and judged high school mock trial teams for years, and I've taught criminal justice at Vols State. While I love my profession as an attorney, my heart leads me to serve the community in a broader way. And that's what, that's why I ran for Alderman, and that's why I serve on the numerous boards of directors I do for nonprofits throughout the community. And that's why I ran for judge, and that's why I've submitted my application for General Sessions Judge tonight. As judge, I would uphold and enforce the law while being fair and professional. I would work in concert with our new General Sessions Judge, Judge Blanton, to ensure consistent application of the law and equal justice for anyone who comes into our General Sessions Courts. The efficiency of our court system is of utmost importance to me in the needs of our county, and as the needs of our county and the demands of our county grows. We simply must work to ensure that our courts perform at maximum level going forward. Lastly, I would work to support and expand our Recovery Court program, something that's very important to me. My commitment to Recovery Court can be seen in my involvement on the Board, in which I have served as Vice President this last year. Throughout my recent judicial campaign, I enjoyed meeting thousands of voters across the county. I was honored to gain the support of so many at campaign events through volunteer, through their volunteer efforts and donations, and putting 550 signs out throughout the county, which was not very fun picking up, I can tell you. I believe the results of the last election, in which I came in second place in the Republican primary, my experience and my service speaks volumes. Thank you all for your service, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Ms. Mitchell is up now, and Mr. Emling will be on deck. Ms. Mitchell, once you start speaking, you'll have three minutes.
My name's Lila Kathleen Mitchell, and as you can see, I'm a woman. I've done, done nothing but practiced criminal law from 1987 until today. I have worked as an Assistant Public Defender for 14 and a half years. I have been an Assistant DA for a period of time. I've worked from one end of the state to the other, and I've enjoyed it. In my personal life, I want you to know I sing in the choir. I'm not very good, but I sing in the choir, and I teach Vacation Bible School. The only thing I ever really wanted to do was be an attorney. And I ran for judge in Memphis once, and I lost. This is on my heart. And I think that there's nothing more than an attorney or a judge can do than do justice and love mercy, and see the people as individuals that come before your courtroom, and know they've got to go home, and that some of them can't pay the bills, and that some of them don't have enough money to pay the court costs and taxes that happen when you come in. So your heart needs to be open to the people more than anything else, more than the greatest degree in the world, or... It's about people. Anyway, that's what I think about it in my last three words. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Mr. Emling, Mr. Malden will be on deck.
I want to thank the Commission for giving us this opportunity. I know y'all received a letter from Judge Weecraft. She was one of the best judges we've had in this county. She was a leader. She inspired. She changed things. And in her letter, I'm gonna quote, she said something about the people of Sumner County and how they interact with General Sessions. For most people, their only experience with the court system is through the General Sessions A General Sessions Judge has to be compassionate. He has to know the law. He has to have an even temperament. Sitting in the audience and listening to Judge Hunter talk about me was humbling, and I was honored. I had no clue what he was gonna say. He just told me he was gonna come. But what better person than someone who sat and persevered on that bench for 19 years, who has seen all of us, our strengths, our weaknesses, what we do well, our demeanors, our compassion, our fervor, than someone who watched us for 19 years, who's judged thousands of cases, and in essence, by coming here, judged all of us candidates? It was an honor. A couple of things that he didn't know, or didn't tell you. I'm the only candidate who's brought changes to General Sessions Court. We have a collection docket. I brought that to Judge Weecraft from another county, and we implemented that, well, she implemented it at my suggestion. I also brought a change to Circuit Court, where we now can have scheduling orders and help move cases along. It doesn't help in General Sessions Court, but what it tells you, out of all the candidates you're gonna hear, I'm the one who's brought innovation to the court. I'm the one who's looked for ways to make an inefficient court efficient, or more efficient. I'm also the only candidate who's spoken to the General Sessions, General Sessions Judicial Conference. I'm the only candidate who's been asked by the Sumner County Bar Association to present continuing legal education on two occasions. That tells me I have the respect of my peers. Otherwise, why would they be asking me? I have lived in Sumner County since 1970. I went to Hendersonville High School. I've had my office on Square and Gallatin for, well, my office for 41 years as a practicing lawyer, but also clerked there for three years, so that gives me 44 years at the same location. I know Sumner County. I'm compassionate. I've worked in charitable works. I've been given some awards that are humbling. I do things. I want to do this. I've worked on the Election Commission for all y'all for 17 years, and I think I've led it pretty well for the last nine. We've had a lot of things come up. My time is up. Thank you very much, and I would appreciate y'all's votes.
Thank you, Mr. Emling. Mr. Malden is up now, and Mr. Whalen will be on deck.
David Howard taught me not to use notes in teen court, so I won't. You know, we were at the, we were at the Legislative Committee meeting on Monday, and I believe it was Chairman Langford who said that he hopes that whoever's selected for this position will spend some time shadowing Judge Hunter, and that got me to thinking about the people that I've shadowed in my own life in the last 11 years. And one of them is no longer with us. In 2011, I came back to Sumner County. I'd graduated law school. I'd taken the bar exam, and I had nothing. I didn't have a job. I was running out of money, so I did what every millennial does. I went home. I went to my parents, and I contacted David, because I knew him from teen court, and he changed my life, because him and Mike Carter said, "We've got a room for you, a place where you can come and practice." And what they did is, they taught me how to practice law by first taking me to Judge Hunter's court. And I got to meet Judge Hunter, and, I'm sorry, Judge Judy, and a spiky-haired prosecutor named William, who seemed to be running for something, and I got to know all these people, and I got to know what it meant to actually practice law. Judge Hunter appointed me to over 1,000 cases while I was a defense attorney. And in 2014, Mike ran for chancellor, if y'all remember that, and he lost. I was his treasurer. I was his de facto campaign manager. And after that crushing defeat, I decided that it was time for me to go to the DA's office. Mike reached back into his compassion. He was the first person to call Ray Whitley and say, "Hey, Ray, you need to hire this kid." Ray Whitley did. And so I got the chance to then go to General Sessions, not as a defense attorney, but as a prosecutor. But I didn't know how to be a prosecutor. I was on the other side of the pink jacket. If you don't know the pink jacket, that's the file we use. And Ron Blanton had to leave, but Ron Blanton came into my office one day, and he taught me how to be a prosecutor. He taught me how to do justice and not to look at my client as being the defendant. He said, "Your client is justice." Many of you have asked me, "Why didn't you run for judge?" Well, because the most qualified person to run for judge was Ron Blanton. And I'm proud that I was on his campaign committee. I was not gonna run against that man. But I stand before you today, the second most qualified person, the only person who has been the gatekeeper for the mental health court, determining who gets in, who gets out. What do we do with the people in our mental health court program when they screw up? Who goes to staff things? I'm the only one. And I'm ready, on day one, to do what needs to be done, to continue our Recovery Court program, which is the best in the state. You want the stats? I got them. We're awesome. To continue to do what needs to be done to keep Sumner County safe. I'm ready to do the PV docket, the DV docket, the FTA docket, the DUIs, the DOSLs, the CPs, and if you don't know what those mean, that's why you need me. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Malden. Mr. Whalen is up now. Mr. Roberts will be on deck.
I am Bill Whalen, and I'm a little different from everybody you've heard from. I want to thank Ashley and Chris for giving remarks. I first would like to again pass on my condolences to the Carter family. Your decision will impact more than the 12 candidates. Your decision will impact approximately 12,000 people a year who go through this court, and their families and friends. I'm also trying to adapt here to what I thought was a five-minute talk down to a three-minute talk. So let me skip a few things, cover some topics. Experience. I'm not gonna cite the experience everybody else has. I don't have the experience some of those have all cited. But I do have over 40 case trials and victories, and the majority of litigation attorneys that you meet try none or very few cases. And that's because most cases settle, over 95% of cases settle. And in fact, that is the nature of General Sessions Court. It is not a court of record. It is not designed to be a trial court. It has too much volume. General Sessions Court gets about 50 cases a day. They get about 10 minutes a case. So you talk, you just heard from several of the people from the DA's office. What do they do? They come into the courtroom. The judge either of the party has come with an attorney, is gonna represent themselves, or they're appointed, a court-appointed attorney that we pay for, the public. And then, the DA's office and that attorney or accused meet and decide how to resolve that particular case, and it comes to the judge to examine. In the vast, vast majority of times, the agreement, the plea bargain, is accepted. Occasionally, it is not, and it's those occasions that I would ask that I be the one on that bench. I am the truly one unbiased, independent point-of-view candidate. I say that because I have not practiced in Sumner County. I've practiced all over the United States. I've practiced in federal courts, state courts, our Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals, and I practice in county courts. But I have not practiced in Sumner County. And I'll suggest to you, that has two great benefits. One, I can't see my clock, 43, one is, I don't know any other lawyers. So if you come before me as a judge, I don't have a bias towards the DA's office, I don't have a bias against the defendants. I am open-minded. The other piece I want to leave you, as we kept on, is I'm not looking for a job. I don't need a job. But for some people applying here, this job represents a 100% pay increase. For others, it represents a job that could last 30 or 40 years. I'd ask you to consider that. And let me conclude with General Sessions Court. My neighbor, oh, I'm sorry, Recovery and Mental Health Court. I support them both. My neighbor makes it. Wendy Swabe is very involved with these things. And it is an important alternative to processing the people who come before this court. Thank you very much. Appreciate your service to Sumner County, and I pray the Lord guides you in your decisions. Good night, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whalen. Mr. Roberts is up next, and Ms. McCormick is on deck. Mr. Roberts? Mr. Roberts? Okay. Ms. McCormick, you'll have three minutes, once you begin. And Derek Smith will be on deck.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Roberts had a family emergency, and he had us leave out, so he just wanted to let people know that. All right, my name is Key Bryant McCormick. I'm not gonna sit here and read you my resume. You have it, and along with a cover letter and my phone calls and conversations that we've had. I'll just touch on a few quick points, one of which is, as you know, I ran for office. I ran for this seat, but the Division I version of it, and worked hard, just as you did, on the campaign trail. I understand the value of putting in the work... I understand the value of putting in the work and allowing the public to vote for you or not vote for you, but I understand that process, and I don't take it for granted. And I want to thank you for going through that process and your service. The second thing is, I've sat as Division, I've sat as judge for Division One, Division Two, and Division Three. So not just only one court. The bittersweet for me is, my campaign for that race started actually with Mike Carter. He was the first person to encourage me to run. And the bookend bittersweet was, I was the last lawyer to sit as special judge for him right before he passed away. I understand what our county needs. I understand what that court is. I've practiced there for sixteen years, in that court. I have a commitment to safety and keeping our public safe. Even though I'm a defense lawyer, I don't have a bias. I have law enforcement in my immediate family, and I've judged every case fair and firm based on the facts presented and how they are presented in court. And that's what you want. You want someone who's fair, firm, and committed to safety, who at the end of the night wants the same thing you do, to make sure you're safe and you wake up okay. And that's what I bring to this position. I ask for your support and vote tonight, essentially to allow me to serve and continue Mike Carter's legacy, and I don't take that for granted. Lastly, I just want to end by saying thank you for your service. You fought hard. You have served us well. Our county has thrived. So as your swan song tonight, as you leave, as several of you leave and several of you continue, thank you again from the bottom of my heart. A friend of mine sent me a poem, a heart-written note, and he's a judge in another county when I wasn't successful in my campaign. And I found solace, and he quoted Teddy Roosevelt's "Man in the Arena." So if you haven't read it, be sure to. It brought me comfort in knowing that I wasn't successful in the seat. But it basically summarizes and says, "It's not the critics who matter, but it's the person in the arena. It's the person who's willing to be there with their faces marred and deal with all that they do, knowing that they might be successful or they might not be." But it's so much better of a poem than I can speak on. But thank you again. Be blessed, and thanks for your service.
Thank you, Ms. McCormick. Mr. Smith and Mr. Ramsey will be on deck. Just to make sure everyone heard, Mr. Roberts had to leave for a family emergency, or he planned to be here to speak.
Mr. Chairman, members of the county commission, I am a former Circuit Court judge and chancellor, where I traveled the circuit as judge and chancellor for four counties. I am a special judge that sits for the standing special judge that sits for Judge Taylor and Judge Andre in General Sessions Court. I'll be sitting for Judge Taylor this coming Wednesday. What I know about General Sessions Court is it's a lot like a triage of a hospital, meaning that the dockets are large, meaning that the average person goes there to receive justice. But then, they really don't go there just to receive justice. They also go there to be treated incredibly pleasantly, not just civilly, but pleasantly, because you're dealing with people oftentimes in civil court and in criminal court who don't have lawyers. They're scared to death. It's the first time they've been in court, and you've got to make them feel pleasant. You've got to make them feel at ease in that courtroom, while maintaining a level of decorum, of course. But they must, the anxiety must be alleviated from them for them to be able to present their cases in the best possible way. I believe, along with being civil and pleasant with every single litigant, it's also important that the two judges meet, discuss the various issues, so that you don't have judge shopping. You don't want anybody to say, "Thank goodness I'm in front of this judge," or "Thank goodness I'm in front of that judge." You never want that to happen. So it's important that the judges meet on a regular basis. And I have spoken with Ron Blanton about this, and he is in agreement, that that is what you have to do. Little things like, are you going to allow motions or emotions to be heard in court? Are they going to have to be written? Little things like, how are you going to address bonds? And there are lots and lots of other issues. I have also served as an assistant district attorney general, a district attorney general pro tempore, where I prosecuted cases throughout the entire state of Tennessee, including this county many, 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 many years ago, our county, many, many, many years ago. I do support recovery court. I spoke with General Blanton about that. There's another court, I think, that we should seriously consider, which is a veterans' court, Veterans Treatment Court. I'd like to spearhead that. I was a member of the, or served with the United States Navy Reserves. I'm very proud of that. And I do know that there is a recidivism rate that we have to deal with when it comes to veterans. And I do intend on trying to spearhead that kind of court, because I do think we need it. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Ramsey and Mr. Templeton will be on deck. And Mr. Ramsey, you'll have three minutes once you begin.
I'll do the best I can. I have a weak voice, and my lungs don't feel well, thank you COVID, but I'm going to do the best I can. Most of you don't know me. I moved to Sumner County in the nineties, but I was the son of a son of a coal miner. World War II took that man away, and he came back as a dairy farmer. And that's how I grew up, on a dairy farm in upstate New York with maybe twenty to thirty cows. And we knew when it was time to milk the cows. That was time to get acutely aware that something had to be done. That has carried through in my approach to life in general. After I went to college, I worked at Vanderbilt and was the technical director of the Artificial Heart Program. And that might have piqued my interest a little bit into my playing role in the accreditation process of everything that's not a nurse or doctor. That organization is the Council on Allied Health Professions. I was a commissioner. If you went to one of those schools, I helped develop your protocols and program and curriculum. That's what I did for years. Education, again, plays a role in that, and it comes back as part of my makeup. I am also, and I thank the previous speaker for mentioning the two, my two strongest points, other than the fact that I'm old, and we've already heard, we need someone young. I'm not. But I have a background and have something to offer. What I did was become an accredited VA attorney, and my company assists veterans and their families getting benefits thirty or forty times. We do that every month. It's very helpful to them. That amount of work is tremendous, though. But that's what I do. If you don't know, I was an expert witness regarding artificial hearts and the death penalty program. And not the medical doctor side, and not the psychological side, but the chemistry side. And I, my affidavit's out on the internet. You can look at it. The death penalty protocol is all addressed tonight. It's not, it's not my passion, except that we know from the science that it doesn't work, and that's why the protocols have changed over time. They can't figure it out, probably because, excuse me, a higher power knows when the heart needs to stop. We can't do it reasonably well with science. Do I have time?
Yes, sir.
No. I'm out of time. My practice has been in the federal courts for the last seven or eight years. The federal statutes all employ the state statutes, and anybody going to prison from a sentence in federal court also has state charges. I've kept up with all that and look forward to participating further in that area. Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Ramsey. All right, Mr. Templeton, Mr. Elliott will be on deck. And, Mr. Templeton, you'll have five minutes.
About three minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, three minutes, three minutes, excuse me. Old habits.
I knew you weren't going to keep me here all night. I made you buy me dinner before I got up here. All right. So we just finished up a general election where I was not successful. I did come in second place. I got 5,700 votes. So just to clear up, that's the good thing about going last, you can hit points that people have hit before you. So actually, overall, I was second place with 5,700, and the winner of the Republican primary got 5,775. So generally, second place overall. Also, for thirteen months, I've got out here in this community. I've campaigned on compassion, but also holding people accountable. Yes, I've done this job, hours of this job. For the past two years, I added it up yesterday. In 2021, I sat as judge forty-two times. This year, there have been thirty-one weeks, and I've sat twenty-one of those times. So that's on average a week. Of anyone here, probably everyone put together, I have been the special judge for a majority of people that have come before me in this county. I say that for this reason. I'm not an attorney that represents rich people. I represent everyday, average people that are choosing to either pay their daycare expense or pay me to represent them. I have more payment plans than I could ever catch up with, and if I ever collect them all, you will never see me again. These are the people that are coming in General Sessions. These are the people that want to be heard. They want to tell their story. You need to find out why they're there and keep them from coming back. They are there over and over and over. It is constant. This job is a community service job. My family, the farm I live on, I'm the fifth generation. My family's been here since 1810, when it came in to my family. So to say that I have roots in this community is an understatement. There's epidemic out there that's affecting our community like no other, and that's drugs, and I don't mean marijuana. I mean hard drugs, methamphetamine, heroin, those type of things. We've got to keep those people out of the system. We have a great recovery court, of which I'm the treasurer of the Mental Health Court. I believe we need to expand that. I believe we need to screen more people that come into General Sessions Court to offer them that. It costs the county thousands of dollars to house a person in jail, where so many programs that we could get them to recovery at limited cost to us. That's what General Sessions is. It is a community service compassionate job. That's why I want that job, because I've been doing that job. I've held these people accountable while also being compassionate. I'm not a politician. I don't think I've called maybe one of you, because a judge doesn't need to be politicking to get this job. It should be fair. I've never asked anyone, if they come in my courtroom, "Are you a Democrat? Are you a Republican? Are you an independent?" It never comes up. These are not the issues that come up, and I ask you to consider me for this job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Templeton. Mr. Elliott.
And, Michelle, you have three minutes once you begin.
Thank you. Good evening. It's a pleasure to come speak to you tonight, and you've heard from very distinguished people on this panel. And I'm sure that you're looking at me and going, "What differentiates you from everybody else?" We've got prosecutors. Well, I was a former prosecutor for almost the better part of this past ten years. We've got defense attorneys. Well, I've done defense work for all those times, about nine and a half years, and now I'm back in defense work. The one thing that will separate me from all the other candidates is, twenty-three years ago, I decided to go to the police academy and become a police officer. And I've actually honorably served as a Gallatin police officer. And so every single candidate out here tonight cannot say that they've done police work, defense work, and prosecution. Now, you heard General Dean say earlier that he believed that 90% of cases that come through General Sessions are criminal. I sat as special judge last Friday, and I wanted to know those numbers, so I asked the court clerks, the court staff. I said, "What is the real number of criminal cases that come before you?" And I said, "I thought it was ninety." They said, "No, Jason, it's more like 97% of the cases." Now, if you're looking for someone to vote for tonight, to distinguish between all the other great candidates we have, and they are great candidates, I know most of them. They are very dear friends to me. But no one can look at a criminal court case the way that I can. I can look at it as a police officer. I can look at it as a defense attorney, and I can look at it as a prosecutor. And that is what distinguishes me from the other panels. So a lot of people that I have spoken with wanted to know, "Well, Jason, why didn't you run for the General Sessions Division One?" At that particular time, my wife and I were looking into buying a business. I didn't think it was pertinent at that time to run. But I will tell you, what changed my mind was the day after Judge Carter's funeral. And I was sitting there, and I went to General Sessions Court, and I had three cases. And I had many, many of my legal colleagues come up to me and say, "Jason, you should put in for this. You should run for judge. You've got the temperament. You've got the background. You knock all the checkmarks off. You should do this." Then the court staff came to me, and I had court staff and court officers coming up to me saying, "Jason, we think you'd be fantastic for this. Why don't you put in for this?" So at that point in time, I came home and met my wife, and we decided at that time I was going to put my name in. So don't have a lot of time left for you, y'all that don't know me. I have been here in Hendersonville all my life. My children grew up here. I met my wife tonight, as a matter of fact, just to give her a little props. This is our 25th anniversary tonight, and we're spending it here in the county commission. So, yes, brave, very brave for me to do that. But I just want you to know that I'm ready for this job. I check all the boxes. I've got everything that we need for a General Sessions judge. I have the temperament, and I've got the experience. And twenty-three years of legal experience is what I bring to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. All right, we've had a motion and a second. We've heard from our judicial candidates. Are there, is there anyone, does anyone want to nominate someone from the floor to add to our list? Okay, seeing no additional candidates, we will proceed. Mr. Kemp will proceed with our roll call.
I will call off each commissioner's name. If you will select one candidate to vote for, I will repeat the candidate back to you. At the end, we will call anyone not voting, wishing to vote, anyone wishing to change your vote, before we record the vote. The chairman has said, "Any candidate on this ballot that does not receive a vote will be excluded, and if no one receives twelve votes, we'll call the vote again." From the First District, Commissioner Wright.
Jason Elliott.
Wright votes Elliott. Gomenden.
Russ Edwards.
Gomenden votes Edwards. Hinton. Hinton votes McCormick. Driver.
Key Bryant McCormick.
Driver votes McCormick. Graves.
McCormick.
Graves votes McCormick. Foster.
Dean.
Foster votes Dean. Shell.
McCormick.
Shell votes McCormick. Ring. Ring votes Edwards. Sullivan.
Edwards.
Sullivan votes Edwards. DeWitt.
McCormick.
DeWitt votes McCormick. Tinsley.
Eric.
Malden.
Malden.
Tinsley votes Malden. Stewart.
Edwards.
Stewart votes Edwards. Rhodes.
Edwards.
Rhodes votes Edwards. Hyde.
Edwards.
Hyde votes Edwards. Tucker.
McCormick.
Tucker votes McCormick. Becker.
Emeling.
Becker votes Emeling. Taylor.
McCormick.
Taylor votes McCormick. Goode. Goode votes Elliott. Kruger.
McCormick.
Kruger votes McCormick. Langford.
McCormick.
Langford votes McCormick. Mansfield.
Dean.
Dean.
Mansfield votes Dean. Guthrie.
Edwards.
Guthrie votes Edwards. Nipper.
McCormick.
Nipper votes McCormick. Any commissioner wishing to change their vote? The ballot is now closed. We have Dean with two votes, Edwards with seven votes, Emling with one vote, Elliott with two votes, Malden with one vote, McCormick with ten votes. And those are all the vote totals. So we are down to one, two, three, four, five, six candidates. All right, Mr. Chairman, the candidates on the second ballot will be Dean, Edwards, Emling, Elliott, Malden, McCormick.
Okay.
All right, those are our candidates. Any low vote getter will be dropped from this ballot, is it any, and tie for low vote getter? Okay.
Yeah.
Any low, the low vote getter, okay. Wright.
Key Bryant McCormick.
Wright votes McCormick. Gomenden.
Edwards.
Gomenden votes Edwards. Hinton.
Edwards.
Hinton votes Edwards. Driver.
McCormick.
Driver votes McCormick. Graves.
McCormick.
Graves votes McCormick. Foster.
Edwards.
Foster votes Edwards. Shell.
McCormick.
Shell votes McCormick. Ring.
Edwards.
Ring votes Edwards. Sullivan.
Edwards.
Sullivan votes Edwards. DeWitt.
McCormick.
DeWitt votes McCormick. Tinsley.
McCormick.
Tinsley votes McCormick. Stewart.
Edwards.
Stewart votes Edwards. Rhodes.
Edwards.
Rhodes votes Edwards. Hyde.
Edwards.
Hyde votes Edwards. Tucker.
McCormick.
Tucker votes McCormick. Becker.
Edwards.
Becker votes Edwards. Taylor.
McCormick.
Taylor votes McCormick. Goode.
McCormick.
Goode votes McCormick. Krueger.
McCormick.
Krueger votes McCormick. Langford.
McCormick.
Langford votes McCormick. Mansfield.
Edwards.
Mansfield votes Edwards. Guthrie.
Edwards.
Guthrie votes Edwards. Nipper.
McCormick.
Nipper votes McCormick. Any commissioner wishing to change their vote?
Mr. Chairman, I wish to change my vote to McCormick.
Ring changes his vote from Edwards to McCormick. Any commissioner wishing to change their vote? Ballot is closed. With ten votes for Edwards and thirteen votes for McCormick, we have an election for McCormick.
First, let me say congratulations to Key Bryant McCormick for your win. Let me also say to all of our candidates, I thought we had a great, when we appointed a judge previously, we had a great pool of candidates. I think we had an equally strong group of candidates tonight. I want to commend the Bar Association of Sumner County, because I think you saw tonight in the, in the comments from our judges, that we had many, many excellent candidates, and I know it's tough to come up here and put your name out here. Most of us are friends with almost all of you, and thank you for being willing to serve, and thank you for stepping forward. I would suggest that we take now a ten-minute recess without objection, and we will come back at nine, at nine oh five, nine oh five. We're going to start back in two minutes, two minutes. Let's go ahead and start returning to our seats. Hey, Jerry, I remember now why we, why I wanted to leave those ones in, because we'd have eliminated like.
We're going to start back in two minutes, two minutes. Let's go ahead and start returning to our seats.
All right, we're going to move on. Mr. Kemp, would you like to read our public notice? All right, we'll call the meeting back to order. All right, we're going to move on. Mr. Kemp, would you like to read our public notice? All right, we'll call the meeting back to order. It's okay, we'll do. All right, we're going to, we're going to do 2208-03 and then we'll jump back up to 2208-2. Yeah, all right, is there a motion to approve 2208-03? Okay, motion made by Commissioner Ring, seconded by Commissioner Gomenden. Any comments? All right, I see no one in the queue. Let's vote.
Resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. With 18 affirmative votes, it is approved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll go back up to 2208-02. Mr. Kemp, would you read the public notice?
Sumner County Board of County Commissioners will hold a public hearing on August 15th, 2022 at 7:00 PM in the Bethel Brown Commission Chambers. Brimstone Woods County Line Subdivision rezoning, Brimstone Builds, represented by Green LID Design, Second Commission Voting District, Billy Gomenden and Larry Hinton. Application is seeking to rezone from rural residential to suburban residential SR. Subject property is located at 318 Woods Road, Portland, Tennessee, is on Tax Map 16, Parcel 4703, contains 14.1 acres and is zoned rural residential. The Sumner County Regional Planning Commission forwarded a positive recommendation relating to this item on June 28, 2022. A copy of this notice is on file in the Sumner County Development Office. Anyone having any interest concerning this request is invited to attend the meeting.
Okay, we'll call the public meeting into order. Mr. Wilkinson from Greenland Design has signed up to speak.
He is, he's representing. Nobody else has signed up. He's fine. He's here just for questions.
Okay, you're out of order. Okay, yes, sir. You're out of order.
Will my testimony, asking the Chair to define to the ignorant citizen who usually votes according to his elected representative trust, a trust that he will look out for their welfare. So will you please define how that works and not take that away from my other narrative on what has been openly violated and done by your commission and by your Chair? So I can understand and not take that away from my five-minute narrative on how it was done. Let's discuss how it might and probably is going to be done right now. You're going to take that away from me, my understanding, because I want to know so I can do it right. I want it to be true. I want it to be true, in fact.
Yes, sir, I just asked for you to...
I want it to be true in record, evidentiary, litigious record of your conduct upon our known involved citizenry into that community, our community. I did not hear the name yet. What is it that you are saying that I am to speak on? Because I am only capable of speaking on one issue, and it is a recently redesigned PUD, including...
Yes, sir.
And it is very convoluted in application, or I would say I recently said in my definitive obfuscation as to how this was done on a 2007 C-O-L-C-L-O, excuse me, C-L-O-M-R permit under FEMA. And this topic right now that you just recently discussed is not the topic that I'm qualified. I don't think something, there wasn't anything in the Shackle Island Historic District that I am aware of. So please clarify what you want me to talk on.
Yes, sir, this is public comments. This is your chance to speak on what you wish to speak on on an agenda item.
Yes, sir.
Actually, this is under the zoning, so if you could speak on the rezoning before us for 3381 and 3251 Long Hollow Pike.
Okay, is that what you just talked about just a minute ago?
No, sir, that was a different issue. That was in Portland.
I'm sorry. I will admit that in the past seven or eight years, I have been diminished by certain activities of this court and of Chantry Court from 2007 forward into my residency and my mental construct of my worth into community and to my historic Shackle Island district. So I'm trying to get a subtract myself from the story because it doesn't concern me and it's no importance. It's not me. It is the narrative of this inclusion, PUD, Beach Commons Retail Development, 3081, I believe is Long Hollow Pike, was an address in conflict with the proposed PUD, which if you invoke under the 2007 permit, will, through demonstration, require ongoing, or well, now that's debated, ongoing, because there's been a destruction occurred and has been ongoing. There's so many things ongoing with this permit that it comes back onto, comes back onto, well, certainly confidence into a board's application or demonstrated applications today on conditional use permits on known through evidentiary, evidentiary left through that available public record. And the 14th Amendment, that unfortunately, it's my turn in the box. I ask to be invoked. I want it to apply. I do not want more, I do not want more punishment. I do not want more negative application that has occurred through this particular construction, Tennessee home site. I do not want more. I have, I maintain the boundary, the west boundary, I believe it is, of the Seventh District in my property. And I was, in official record through Sumner Chantry, the, I'm sitting here without anything. If I had all my notes on everything, I could probably give you, I know I could give you the exact date if this happened. I can tell you the whole story, but it's too long and it won't fit into anything that I'm complaining about right now. But it does give me the background to... uh, the background to be considered qualified.
Yes, sir.
At least be qualified to participate. And that I want those protections now because I submit to this community. And everyone in it, I do not stand against growth. This is not about taxation, this is not about monetary concern, this is about a value system placed, a value system, a value system forced by the committee, by the county, the primary initial action any citizen has to have, that must have, and has been not allowed, action by committee demonstrated in action.
Mr. Bowden, I hate...
To the PUD developer. Now, if that's done, what that does is it opens up, it opens up liability, endangerment, death.
Mr. Bowden, your time's up.
Destruction, demonstrated up to today of water floodway designation, all included, all words, all definitions, known and unknown.
Mr. Bowden, your comments have been noted, and we will add those to the record. We appreciate it, and your time is up.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. All right, Mr. Jim Latimer and Ms. Chrissy Miller will be on deck. And Mr. Latimer, if you can state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes once you get started.
Jim Latimer, 1578 Latimer Lane in the Shackle Island Community. I'd like to thank everybody for letting us come here tonight and speak to you about the future of our historic community. I've lived there all my life. When I was a little boy, it was a farming community, gravel roads, trestle bridges, feed mills, country stores. It's changed considerably in that time. Now, it's a vital artery between several cities in the middle of Tennessee. Now, we know that things can't stay the same all the time, but we would like to try to go ahead and maintain some of the historic feeling that we have in that community, and this development will grow right in the middle of the, uh, of the community and take away a lot of that. Now, we understand again that there's, there's progress to be made, but the place where this is going and beside the creek and in the middle of the community with the traffic situation, you have a lot of problems with that. Now, I've lived there all my life. I've seen that creek out of the banks many times. My father has told the tale many times of four cousins that drowned in 1929 in that creek when it's out of the banks. Worsum Store was spun around on that. You have to look back to 2010 and you see, you know, the Long Hollow Pike area getting just flooded over there. Now, you can raise it, but you cannot take away that creek coming out of its banks. And when that creek comes out of its banks, it's gonna go wherever it wants to, no matter if you got retail businesses there or whatever, it's gonna come across. So I would like to ask the board to take the thoughts of the community in, in hand, honor the covenant with your voters that put you in office and the communities. Think of the future of this community. We do not desire this, and thank y'all for letting us speak.
Thank you, Mr. Latimer. Ms. Chrissy Miller is, is up next, and Harriet Babel will follow her. Ms. Miller, you'll have five minutes, if you don't mind stating your name and address.
My name is Chrissy Miller, and I live at 1005 Thorn Hill Court, Hendersonville, Tennessee. And I live directly across the subdivision across from Long Hollow Baptist Church where this retail would be going. I'm also a native of Shackle Island, born and raised. My children are growing up there, my family's still there. I grew up on a farm, um, just a mile from there, and that farm where my mom still lives, what's left of it, flooded terribly in 2010, and that was before anything was changed over there. And not only is that in a flood plain, it's also in a floodway. And there is no way that it's not gonna flood again. I mean, it's just impossible. And when I was campaigning, I knocked on hundreds and hundreds of doors. Is that better? Okay. I've knocked on hundreds of doors, and, um, those people have reached out to me as an incoming commissioner for District 24, and they have told me, no, 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 and no. I have not had one person in all of District 24 that is for this. So please, I'm begging you, listen to your constituents, and please vote no on this rezoning because there's nobody in Shackle Island that wants this. Um, they don't wanna be flooded, they don't want the traffic. Guys, it takes me 21 minutes to take my children to school at Beach High School. 21 minutes in the morning. I live three tenths of a mile from the school. If we have retail and they put in whatever they're gonna put in, Starbucks, whatever, and everybody's stopping to get coffee, that 21 minutes is probably gonna turn into 40, 50 minutes. It's absolutely ridiculous, it's already overcrowded, and, um, I mean, it, it's just gonna be a nightmare, it's gonna be an incredible nightmare. So please consider what the constituents want, what the people want, and they want a no vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Uh, Ms. Babel and Mr. Jamie Teichner will be on deck. Ms. Babel, if you can state your name and address, you'll have five minutes to speak.
My name is Harriet Babel. I live at 102 Eliza Street. My address is Hendersonville, but I live in the county. So we'll just get that straight. Okay, and then I, I hope you listen to me tonight because I have been up here for 20 years, off and on, and I just feel like you never hear me, or if you hear me, you just ignore us. So just tonight, for one night, just please listen to us. In 1830, Daniel Webster in a speech to the Senate said, "It is the people's government, and we answer to the people." The people of the United States have declared that the Constitution shall be of the supreme law. We must either admit the proposition or dispute the authority. And as far as I know, our Constitution still stands. And in Lincoln in the Gattesburg Address, it said, "All the people, for the people, and by the people." And the people of Shackle Island have spoken over and over again at these meetings about what we want, and over and over again, it seems to me that we don't, we've been ignored because we do not want another mall. If you think about it, now back in the 1990s, when Steve Bots was here, which I'm sure a lot of you remember Steve Bots, there was a Shackle Island overview, and a lot of us came to the Shackle Island overview, and that night, we were told whatever we wanted down the Long Har, Long Hollow corridor, that's what we would get. Now, at that time, my subdivision was one acre lots, which thankfully it still is. So everybody that night agreed on the one acre lots and that we didn't want any more strip malls because you had one at Cambridge Farms and it was half empty. So he said, "That sounded good." Well, wasn't very long after that that Carrollton built the subdivision and there were no one acre lots. Then so, then we had the next subdivision, and it wasn't any one acre lots. So that just went out the window real quick. So now we're asking not to have a subdivision that has, well, rather, the mall. The strip mall at Cambridge Farms, as I've already mentioned, there's a mall being built at Publix, which is like five minutes from Shackle Island, which is not like, we don't know what's going in there yet. And it, and there are plenty of empty stores in Indian Lakes, and there's some in Glenbrook. So if someone wants to have a retail store, there are plenty of empty places, and there's nothing worse, I think, than going through a town and seeing empty stores, all the vacancies. They say if you build it, they will come. Well, I'm not so sure about that. I will not support the mall. I will not support the gas station or anything else they build down there because it doesn't take me that long to get anywhere. So the answer is, please listen to the people. The area that they wanna build in is in a flood plain. Now, it is flooded from the last two years on backwards. So when we had that big flood back in the 2000s, I can't remember what, I had to come home from Bristol, Tennessee, because my husband said, "You better come home quick because it is flooding." So you can imagine what that flood plain was like. And when they build it up, the water is still gonna go somewhere. There's a creek, and next to that creek is Shackle Island Road, and on Shackle Island Road, there are numerous houses, and if you drive down that after a big rain, their backyards are flooded. So you're gonna build this big mall, and you're gonna build it up so maybe it doesn't flood, but the water's gonna flood those people's homes. And by that time, the FEMA comes out and says, "Oh, yeah, it's flooded." Well, it's too late. So something really needs to be done. So I would please ask you to vote no tonight if you truly care about our, our community and the people you're supposed to be representing. If you vote no, we appreciate it. If not, then in the years to come, you will be remembered as the ones who voted against the people. So please, listen to us and do what we ask for one time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Babel. Mr. Teichner, Connie O'Neil will be on deck. Mr. Teichner, if you can state your name and address, and then you'll have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jamie Teichner. I'm 1020 Sweet Oak Ridge, Hendersonville, Tennessee. I'm currently District 4. Michelle is my commissioner. And I just come for a moment, won't keep you long. Uh, thank you each for, uh, listening to me, and thank you for representing us. A republic's the most beautiful thing in the world, and we, when we, when we vote folks in to represent, we, uh, we rely on you to just, we call on your good, your good nature and your good conscience to actually, uh, take a moment just to listen to the citizens. And everyone I've met, and I, probably 300, 350 people in the Shackle Island area, um, have all expressed concerns, and we know the flooding. I could, I could state the flooding, I could state the, uh, you know, the traffic issues. But have you ever been out there and, and just like when it's, when the sun is setting, and you look at how beautiful that area is? And it's a historic district. There's something special. It's like, I feel like God can speak to you when you don't have too much concrete and too much growth, and the folks of that community lived there before the growth, and, and they moved there because of the non-growth. And so I, I believe that the ones of us who live in that, those areas, we love those green spaces. And so I just, I call on you as my representative to just, please, you know, just think about how important it is to keep those certain green spaces in place because it, it really does matter. Because the thing that makes Sumner County beautiful, and I believe the, the 4th District currently, uh, is, is really the heart of Sumner County because it's not the lake, it's not the woods, it's not the city, but it's the middle of, of Sumner County. Shackle Island's right in the middle of that, and the, the heartbeat of our county, it relies on not overgrowth, and it relies on having that, that beautiful nature that we get to see when the sun comes up and the sun sets. And so just remember that because our kids, we moved here or we lived here our whole lives because we love what Sumner County has to offer. So I just, I, I call on you, and I just, I thank you for your service to our county, and I just, I, I pray you'll make the right decision. I, I don't have all the answers, but I just know that folks are really, really hurting, wanting to keep that beauty intact, and once we tear it away, it'll never go back. And so I, I just, I pray you'll do that. Thank you so much. Thank you, Commissioner, uh, thank you so much, Chairman.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Teichner. Uh, Ms. Connie O'Neil and Rebecca Goddard will be up next. And Ms. O'Neil, if you can state your name and address, and then you'll have five minutes once you start.
My name is Connie O'Neil. My husband, Tom, and I reside at 2210 New Hope Road. Our property, there's 40 acres of our property that's directly across from the area that we're looking, or that you all are looking at as far as, um, building the commercial. I wanted to start out by reading, um, I've been attending, uh, the commission subcommittees for a good while now, and, um, I wanted to start out by reading something that was included in the minutes from the June 28th, 2020 meeting. Apparently, what needs to happen is that the current property that is being considered is entirely contained in the 100-year flood plain, and the majority of it is contained within the regulatory floodway. Now, for those of you who may or may not know, I just learned this, that floodway is something that you don't mess with unless you get federal approval. So the, the applicant for this particular, um, development has provided a letter from, I assume it's a, um, like an engineering company, and a conditional letter of map revision, which is a clomer from FEMA from 2007. Now, what concerns me about this particular clomer is that as part of it, they included a proposed development from Sumner 2000 property from 2007. And in that, they include what they call a mass grading plan, which is something that I guess would include moving the rock around and moving all the stuff around. Well, if you look at this, and, um, I'd be happy to pass it around, that basically, this is the property that you're looking at to put this development. This is Long Hollow Pike, and this is all of our property. So what they've actually submitted was something that included about 40 acres of our property. Now, I've learned through some of this that, uh, you, um, you have a clomer, which is a conditional letter of approval that was, included the 2007 Sumner County information. And before, um, you actually get a final approval, there's a lot of stuff that has to be done, and that's why they've been, uh, the county or this applicant has, um, included the 2007 plan. Now, as I understand it, that 2007 plan had to make some minor adjustments in order for it to be resubmitted, and that's what they're working on. So that's kind of the, you know, kind of a little bit of the background, but what concerns me the most is that the same minutes from that June 28th, 2022 meeting of the Sumner County Regional Planning Commission states, the letter states that activities up to this point have been conducted under authorization by the clomer, and that a final letter of map revision called a lomer will need to be submitted to FEMA. The letter states that they've employed Goodwin Mills Kaywood to pro, in, who is in the process of preparing the lomer for submission to the FEMA. A condition of approval has been added stating that no commercial site plan package for this property may be considered by the Sumner County Regional Planning Commission until such time as the final lomer is formally approved by FEMA and the boundaries of the regulatory floodway are formally changed. So the question that I have for all of you before you decide to vote on this is, have we received the letter of approval from the FEMA and the boundaries of regulatory floodway changes? And have they been reviewed by our commission, the committee, and passed on to you? So it seems to me that if that hasn't been appro, that hasn't been received and approved, y'all shouldn't be here looking at it.
Okay, thank you.
You shouldn't be voting on it.
Thank you, Ms. O'Neil, your time's up.
So, there you go.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. O'Neil. Uh, Ms. Goddard, you're up. Mr. Avance is on deck.
My name is Rebecca Goddard, and I live at 2339 New Hope Road in Shackle Island. Um, I arrived in Shackle Island seven months ago, um, and I escaped from the tyranny and epic corruption and far too many ignorant voters in California. So please do not California my Tennessee, for the love of God. It's been evident that the planning commission in this town doesn't live or frequent the Shackle Island area ever. Between Stop 30 Road and Long Hollow Pike, the numerous new subdivisions that are built with zero addition to infrastructure... with zero addition to infrastructure, traffic considerations, and safety, it's all the proof that I needed that this commission came here about themselves and not about the people that they represent. If you actually travel on Shackle Island or New Hope Road between the hours of 3:00 PM and 6:00 PM, common sense would dictate that adding a shopping plaza would negatively impact the traffic. The road is completely inadequate for what's already there, in addition to the safety of being across the street from a high school and an elementary school. If you think those kids aren't gonna cross that road and a death is gonna happen, you're fooling yourselves. The planning commission meeting on June 28 had an overwhelming opposition to beach commons, and the commission chose not to listen to the people, but most likely listen to whoever is writing contracts to their businesses under the guise of how much tax revenue it'll bring to the county, which is nothing but speculation. We, the people, said no, and you didn't listen, probably why some of you lost your jobs. But I digress. People like me that move to rural residential and others that have lived in rural residential areas for their whole lives do that, and they stay here because they don't want to live in Hendersonville proper and Gallatin. They want Shackle Island to stay Shackle Island. It's not that difficult. But what part of that are you choosing to blatantly ignore? Why? What are you getting from it? What do you think we're gaining from it? Those are questions that I have and that I'm waiting for an answer for. In 1384, John Wycliffe wrote in his prologue to the Bible that the Bible is the government of the people, by the people, and for the people. Abraham Lincoln didn't come up with that, Jim, even though he was an amazing president. The government is of the people. That's us. By the people, that is us. And for the people, that is us. And it's a government of the people from the city, the county, the state, and the federal. And I think that a lot of you have forgotten your place. The people of Shackle Island, the people do not want beach commons. They do not want beach commons. I can spell it and make a sign for you. I adamantly oppose the annexation, especially since you failed to properly prepare for even the smallest of growth. Thank you for your time, and please vote down this ridiculous unwanted waste of resources. You're more than welcome to put a mini-mall in your neighborhood.
Ms. Javance, you're up now, and Ms. Waller will be on deck. Ms. Javance, if you can state your name and address for the minutes, and then you'll have five minutes.
Thank you. Michelle Javance, 1335 Long Hollow Pike. Something funny?
All right. Please continue with your comments, Ms. Javance.
Okay. My mom and dad live in Shackle Island. They live about, just a few houses down from the church. They're opposed to this development. My mom said that nobody wants it. She said a few years ago, they sent around a survey asking what people wanted there. But it was a multiple choice, and there wasn't a choice for anything other than just what was on the multiple choice. So that's kind of like a, it's kind of phony, phony survey when things like that happen. So anyway, I'm asking you to please vote no on this, because like all the neighbors have been saying, people don't want it. It is in a floodway. And I think it's really dumb to put a gas station next to a creek in a floodway. It's really dangerous. It's really environmentally bad. So please vote no.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Javance. Ms. Waller. Ms. Waller, you'll have, if you can state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes once you begin.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner and members of the commission. My name is Sandy Waller, and my husband and I, Chad, my husband Chad and I live at 260 Hurt Road with our two dogs and their cat, Scaredy. We've been in Shackle Island for 17 years, and we moved right outside of Hendersonville into the county because I like to watch trees grow and grass grow. And I'm actually starting to think that if Sumner County had a theme song, it would be pave paradise and put up a parking lot. We don't want this development at the corner of Long Hollow and New Hope Road. We don't need it. If we want to go shopping, we can run down to Glen Oaks, or we can go to Goodlettsville. But we moved to the county because we like the county. We like the woods. Please. I don't know, I had some neighbors that thought about coming, but they said, "That thing's already been decided. It's just a waste of time." And I, because I guess hope springs eternal, I decided I wasn't gonna buy that, and I was going to spend my time and come and just tell you how I feel, and I'm basically a newbie, just living 17 years in this historic community of Shackle Island. So I would urge you to pay attention to the people, ignore the developers this time, and keep our little Shackle Island country for a little while longer. Thank you for your service and your time.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. Okay. At this time, we have Tennessee Home Sites. Do you have someone who wishes to speak?
Hi, I'm Mike Stanton, represent TN Home Sites. The owner's Rob Horton, Stan Fields. I do have a presentation tonight. It's been a long night. I think a lot of it's included in your packet. One of the things I will say briefly is, you know, I think there's a misunderstanding that this property doesn't already have commercial zoning. This property has been zoned commercial since the mid-'80s. Basically, what we're asking is to move the area that's currently zoned where it is to be more parallel with Long Hollow Pike, which is what makes...
Sir, if you can refrain from coming, let him have his chance to speak too.
Which is what makes sense. And don't know what happened back in the '80s when it was approved where it was, but it didn't make sense then, it doesn't make sense now. What we're proposing is just simply putting it at parallel to Long Hollow Pike. So again, yes, it is rezoning in the fact that part of the property is rural residential, but it's already zoned commercial out there, along with Ms. O'Neil's property as well. Beyond that, we did do a survey out there. We had over 600 people respond. Seventy, about 53% wanted something out there, agreed that community-based services was needed out there and wanted to see that. Another 23% or so just were not opposed, just was neutral, and then we had about 23% that said we don't want anything. So honestly, we, I don't want to belabor, I have a 20-minute presentation, I don't want to do that, but I will say that we're here to answer your questions. We have staff, we're traffic and engineer here, we have our FEMA company here, GMC, we have civil sites, so we're here to answer questions. We have worked with staff, we agree with all staff comments, here to answer questions, and I appreciate your vote.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right. Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve 2208-02? Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Goode. Mr. Mansfield.
So I was at the planning commission in June, and this came before. There's approximately a dozen people who signed up to speak against this. Not one single person spoke in favor of it. There was something egregious that the developer's representatives said, a little scare tactic to say, "Well, there's a small slice of a corner of this property. I represent Shackle Island from New Shackle Island and Long Hollow Pike all the way to the Davidson County line. So that's my district, currently District 11." Yes, that corner's been zoned commercial for several decades because there was an old mill or a feed mill, I can't remember what, but the main portion of what's being requested for rezoning is actually a rural residential. But it was said, "Well, if you don't do this, they could build an adult entertainment venue," is one of the things that was said. So do you think for one minute that somebody's gonna try to put an adult entertainment venue next to a church and across from a school? You're out of your mind. Was offensive statement, was a scare tactic? I didn't appreciate it. Citizens didn't appreciate it. And as a representative of Shackle Island, I don't, I'm totally opposed to this, but one of the things, talk about the survey that he just mentioned, well, it's called the Delphi technique. It's kind of like gaslighting somebody. You give a predetermined set of answers that only benefit you and doesn't actually give you the right set of answers, which one of them, they didn't have an option to say no. Have multiple, I've had hundreds of people reach out to me against this, received only 11 emails about this. One was for it, who said that it was a vocal minority who was against this, which was pretty insulting to the community because it's not a vocal minority, it's a very vocal majority. But Somerset Downs, pretty much the entire HOA is against this, and they live across the street from it. But the HOA president made sure to say that the survey data from the developers was manipulated and left out all the comments speaking out against it as simply skipped. So there was no option for saying no to this on their, you know, I'm gonna call it a fake survey. The option is, do you want to rezone this for commercial? And basically, you know, if I can do the opposite, do you want to increase your traffic, decrease your quality of life, and basically cause more flooding in the causeways and the creeks? Yes or no? You know, of course, everybody's gonna say, "No, I don't want that." So there's, you can always structure a question, but it was a false survey. I didn't appreciate it. Want to address the clomer, the conditional letter of approval. I've reached out to the county engineer and the county planning director. I personally am not satisfied with the answers given only because of stuff Ms. O'Neil, who owns the property across the street, has told me about, you know, looking at this, I mean, this is in violation of what's called that 2007 clomer, the entire project. They're trying to seek to get out from that, and the fact is, they don't even have approval for that yet. So what's before us tonight shouldn't even be happening. This should definitely be deferred to the new commissioner, deferred for a while, because they don't even have the approval to do what they want to. It's kind of like, oh, let's just rezone this, and then just hope it gets approved later by FEMA. It's the wrong thing to do. So there's also been a no-rise certificate supposedly that's been given to this property, and that deals with the flooding in the FEMA floodway. And a no-rise certificate is an educated guess at best. You can't predict water. It's the most violent force on the planet is water. You know, there's so many variables in the creek and on the banks as to what happens up and further and down the watershed, when you have more development, more backfilling, you just can't predict this. So a no-rise certificate proposes that there will be no more than a foot of rise in the floodwater, but as one of my constituents stated, you know, he said, "You can't tell me with a straight face that you can accurately calculate that or even prove it true or false after the fact. It looks good on paper, but so do a lot of other bad ideas, and it's just a bad idea to fill in floodways." That's exactly what happened, has happened here. Again, water is the most destructive force on the planet. This place is gonna flood and continue flooding. And it's simple math, the more rooftops you have, the more asphalt you have, the more roadways you have, it displaces where water has to go. It cannot absorb, and you're already on a creek that floods and pushes water downstream, and now they've come in and backfilled this supposed parking lot that's supposedly for Long Hollow Baptist Church, which is whatever the community's been told. And that's not, that's not true at all, because everybody thinks the church owns this property and have to keep healthy. People know, developers own it. They've obviously invested a lot of money into this, questionably on this passing or not. So basically, what citizens have said tonight, unequivocally, citizens have said this to me, hundreds and hundreds of citizens, over the past four years since I've been elected, this has been an issue. I get contacted by this all the time as a representative of Shackle Island. They do not want more development in Shackle Island. They do not want more houses. They don't want retail. They don't want city-type services. No offense to Mayor Clary, who was here earlier, I don't know if he's still here. Shackle Island does not forever want to be annexed into the city of Hendersonville. They live in the county for a reason. They don't want more traffic. They don't want more flooding. They don't want a gas station on a corner. The proposed site plan is a gas station and two high-density retail mini-shopping malls on that corner. And absolutely, it's asinine. It makes no sense at all. It doesn't benefit the community, it just benefits developers. That's it. And I don't blame them for trying to make a profit, but I don't want to make a profit off me or my constituents and cause our quality of life to decrease. Now Ricky Scaz came before, a constituent of mine, for the planning commission to speak out against a rezoning, and he made a very poignant statement. He says, you know, "Understand the county looks at tax revenues or think they want more quantity, but don't you also want to value quality of life over quantity? That's also important to a happy community. Don't you want more happy residents in your community?" And I just know that our community wants to be left alone. They want to protect and preserve the rural charm of our community. They value the quality of life over quantity. So I just am asking you to ignore what the planning commission recommended, because you need to listen to what the citizens are recommending. The citizens are recommending leave them alone, leave this area untouched as far as long as possible. This is a bad location, it's a bad idea, and I'm just begging you, as fellow commissioners and as a representative for this area, speaking on behalf of my constituents, they do not want this. I've had one person say they wanted it to me out of hundreds who've said they didn't. It's pretty clear-cut. Please, well, I'm gonna make a motion. I want to move to defer this to the new commission. One, to deal with the clomer and lomer issues and the property owners in question, so that's my motion, is to defer until September.
Okay. We want to defer it back to planning.
I'll defer it back to planning.
Okay. All right.
That's my motion.
So, okay, motion to defer is our second. Second by Mr. Hyde. We have several people in the queue. I'll just go through real quickly, see if you want to speak on the motion to defer, because it is debatable. Mr. Hyde, do you want to speak on the motion to defer, or you want to wait on the main motion?
Uh, no.
Okay. Mr. Hinton?
This magnitude of discussion on this issue, we're gonna, several of us are gonna punch out tonight and go home. There's not much pressure left over to please folks down the road. What'll happen down there is whatever is legal and whatever the law requires. If at my house, they want to come in and put in a four-way stop in a four-lane highway, if the law allows for that, they can do it and drag me away screaming. So you can't, somebody told me one time, if you don't want nobody building across the road in front of you, you better go over there and buy that field. And that's the only way to avoid it. This is coming. I mean, nobody likes it. I despise it, but this is coming. Whatever's legal, people will do if it'll make them money. So I agree, just defer it, because I'm going home. I'll be done after tonight, you know. I don't, and I believe this ought to be left for the next group coming in, let them make the ultimate decision on it, and then they can be in a position to defend their decision for four years.
Okay.
So I agree, we ought to defer.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hinton. Mr. Taylor, do you want to speak on the...
Main motion, sir.
Main motion? Okay. Mr. Becker? Main motion?
No, I'll speak on this place.
Okay.
Yeah, I was actually hopped into defer it as well. So especially with the FEMA, the questions that are out there with the FEMA approval and whatnot, so I definitely support deferring this, I guess, back to planning. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Becker. All right. There's no one else in the queue. Our motion is to defer to planning. A yes vote is to defer. A no vote is to continue debate on the motion.
The motion to defer is on the board. Mr. Commissioner, please record your vote. With 12 affirmative votes, the resolution is deferred back to planning. All right. That will be kicked back to, or go back to planning. All right, that concludes our zoning for the evening. Consent agenda, is there a motion to approve our consent agenda? Motion made by Commissioner Foster, second by Commissioner Krueger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. I had one no vote. Mr. Mansfield, any other no votes on the consent agenda? Okay. Motion passes 22 to 1 on consent. All right. Notaries, is there a motion to approve our notaries? Motion made by Commissioner Ring, second by Commissioner Hinton. This will be the last time anybody will ever hear me make a joke about notaries, so let's vote. Notaries are on the board. Mr. Commissioner, please record your vote.
Hey, my brother was on that list.
You really are.
22 votes in fact...
Twenty-two votes in favor.
All right. And a squeaker, the notaries pulled through again. And we can now retire that joke forever. It did have a good seven-year run. Okay. All right. Standing committees, committee on committees, Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committee on Committees met tonight's regular section meeting on August 15, 2022. The equalization board has been deferred for a month. Regional Planning Commission, Tom Tucker, was a four-year term. County Mayor recommended Jeff Duncan. It was unanimous, I so move.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Goode, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Kruger. I see no one in the queue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, I have one no vote. Mr. Mansfield, any other noes? Okay, by a vote of 22 to 1, that's approved. Mr. Goode?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Civil Service Board, Will Murphy, Murdy was a two-year term and the county mayor ran a recommendation to reappoint. It was unanimous, and I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Goode, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sullivan. I see no one in the queue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Mr. Mansfield has a no, any other noes? Okay, by a vote of 22 to 1, motion passes. Anything else, Mr. Goode?
Next month's agenda is on your agenda, and that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Goode. Education, Mr. Sullivan.
Eric.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Emergency Services, Mr. Driver. Okay. General Ops, Michelle.
Yeah, of course.
Okay. Highway Committee, Mr. Hinton.
We voted Highway Committee to support the traffic light project that's going down with the, with us paying part, Hendersonville paying part, and somebody can give the address if you'd like. But it'd come unanimous through the Road Committee.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hinton. All right. Legislative Committee, Mr. Ring.
Yes, sir. Number 220804, let me find it here. Dealing with the, excuse me.
Email.
We're closing out the department, county commissioners' email addresses, and I so move. Okay.
Motion made by Commissioner Ring, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeWitt. Mr. Mansfield.
So, just understanding the resolution, because it's, what was said in legislative was a little different than what this resolution read. So I just wanted to clarify some things. Just making sure that this is reading as, because it was said that they're going to keep it open for 15 days after September 1st, which I disagree with, you know. But just clarifying that this is literally saying, as of August 31st, old email addresses are shut off and they don't have access to September 1st. Is that, am I reading this correctly?
I think so, yes. That's my understanding.
They're gonna leave it, if they get mail, it's gonna forward back to them the email address the commissioner gave to them, or if they don't give an email address, just listen to the commissioner.
So it'll be an autoresponder controlled by the IT department, but commissioners will still not, they won't be activating this. Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mansfield. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Anything else, Mr. Ring?
No offense, no sir.
Okay. Budget, Mr. Taylor.
See how well-trained I am, Mr. Kemp? Only took eight years. 2208-06, appropriating funds for hazard mitigation from flooding in Cotton Town to be funded in the Capital Projects Fund. This is a pass-through money and carryover from fiscal year 2122. It's what we met earlier for. Obviously, this is for the mitigation that goes up towards the northern part of the county. I so move.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Taylor, second by Commissioner Foster, Mr. Mansfield.
So, I couldn't quite understand what you said because the speakers aren't exactly the best right now. But this is, can you explain a little bit more what this is and how much this amount is for?
It's a grant that we're getting to help pay for the flood mitigation in the northern part of the county.
So a grant from the state or the federal government?
It's, if I remember right, in the American address we need to, it was through the state and it was funds that were coming in. It may have originated with federal money initially, but we're getting it through the state unless I'm wrong. Is that correct, sir?
What is the amount of that dollar amount?
I will check for you.
Mr. Holt, do you want to speak to that?
Be happy to, Mr. Chairman. Yes. This is state money that we applied for, the citizens did. You had to be flooded at least three times. They've been flooded. Basically, it was paid off by FEMA. And this is a way to actually buy the houses out, completely destroy them, turn it into green space, so no one can ever build there again, and just put it back into the natural state. Because if they continue to build back there, the houses will continue to flood. And it's a program for that. So it's a pass-through.
Similar to what they did in Hendersonville, right there.
That's correct.
Next to John Paul.
Yes, sir.
What is, and what was the amount? I didn't hear the amount once.
Hold on. I'm gonna need to get readers. $64,619.36. Thank you, Justin.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mansfield. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, 2208-07, accepting TDOT grant for State Route 258 intersection, Shackle Island Road at Old Drake's Creek Road, mile marker 431 in Sumner County, Tennessee, appropriating $2 million for state revenue, $250,000 from the city of Hendersonville, $250,000 from Capital Project Local Restricted Fund Balance. I'll explain in a second. What we're doing is it's a grant that's going to be for, right at about $250,000 for us, we'll get from the state. We're going to have matching money from the city of Hendersonville for an additional $250,000. It's a 2080 grant, so it's going to be a little bit over $2 million. We'll have to pay 20% or so of it. We're doing that in conjunction with the city of Hendersonville. Because there might have been a concern before, we've got a signed letter already from the city of Hendersonville stating that they are good for the money on that part. It's actually all going to be reimbursed, but we have to first apply for it through the state. I so move.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Taylor, second by Commissioner Stewart. Mr. Mansfield.
So in committee, you and us talked about this, $2 million from TDOT. So where is that money now? Are they giving that money upfront? I wasn't quite understanding.
No, it's like anything else that comes from the state, Jeremy. And one I know you're very familiar with, the fact that we will allocate the money, then after it's done, they'll reimburse us, like most of the state grants, that you've heard about for the past four years.
So we're, you know, there's no reason to be a smart aleck about it.
I'm not, I'm just explaining.
All right. Go ahead, Mr. Mansfield.
Mr. President, this is the whole point. You don't have to call it all.
Mr. Point of order. Mr. Baden, I'm gonna need you. We're trying to have a discussion.
No, but you're not.
No, it's Mr. Mansfield's time to speak.
No evidence displayed, you are not allowed to ask.
Mr. Baden, I really don't want to have you removed. We're almost at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, I know. Who's taking it?
Sumner County Commission.
That is wrong. By display, kinda. My R.A. display, that's all you can do. You have to pay all that.
Mr. Baden. I'm gonna ask you one more time.
Jeremy, I apologize. What'd you have, buddy? I apologize. What else have you got?
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Mansfield, go ahead. Just my point being, I spoke with our finance director. I know we have a lot of appropriations from our capital projects funds and other funds on things and items. And it's my understanding that Hendersonville has already voted to approve this $250,000, correct? And it's in their budget this year.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Well, that was another, I wanted to clarify on the record.
And it's a very good question.
So, because we've done a lot of, you know, we voted for things before that we haven't had to guarantee on. So, you know, I just want to remind, why we're even having to do this, you know, Jamie, Mayor Clary put in here, you know, Durham Farms, having 600 houses going to 1,200, other nearby subdivisions are adding 320 homes. You know, this is a problem that Hendersonville created by continually rezoning and approving land for overdevelopment without the infrastructure in place. So it's kind of like the dog, the tail chasing the dog on this one. And just, just to remind this commission and remind the citizens, this is just another negative impact of growth on our roadways. So, but just concerned. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mansfield. Mr. Hinton?
This is the issue that I was talking about a while ago with the Road Committee. It did come through the Road Committee and passed unanimously.
Yes, sir. Okay. All right. No one else is in the queue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We got Commissioner Kruger as a no. Any other noes? Okay. Motion passes 22 to 1. Mr. Taylor?
2208-08, appropriating $88,759 for salary survey adjustments for various Sumner County offices from General Fund, Undesign Fund Balance replaces the resolution number 2207-14 from July 18, 2022, the appropriation of $261,277, $261,277, and removes the adjustments for the library. This is the pay plan. Initially, we had removed the library from it. I'm going to ask for the motion that we put it in and that we add an amendment that allows the library to be given money back. So that way they can be a part of the pay plan.
All right. So we got, we're adding to the motion to add the library money back in?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor to appropriate $88,759 for salary survey adjustment, plus the additional for the libraries. Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Ring. Mr. Mansfield, you're first in the queue.
When I said it last month, we just passed a budget for the entire year, and here we are asking for more money. It's just the wrong thing to do at the wrong time, especially given our inflationary and recessionary climate. So I'm going to move to defer this to next year's budget cycle, which is the proper time to reevaluate salaries, not two months after we pass a budget. So my motion is to defer.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I was clarifying something, Mr. Kemp. So your motion is to defer?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Motion to defer, is there a second? Second by Mr. Hyde. Mr. Hinton or Mr. Becker, do you wish to speak on the motion to defer?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Hinton.
This, this money, or a portion of this money, is earmarked, if it isn't, we can earmark it, for part-time employees. Now, in the last, the last year, I'll say, there's been several positions with the libraries. We, in Hendersonville, for example, we had two full-time children's librarians, or youth librarians, or whatever they call them. Those, those two were let go and replaced with two temporaries. So this number may have grown for, for people that are not full-time because of some of the manipulation, bad choice of words, some of the, some of the adjustments that somebody seemed to think was necessary. So I don't know exactly, I don't know exactly how this is going to play out. But we got, we got part-time people that are making $10.50 an hour or something like, and part-time, well, multiply that times 30 hours a week and see if anybody can live on it. I mean, you, you can't be competitive. You, you can't be competitive and hire competent people for these jobs, especially when they're part-time and when you're not paying competitive with the hamburger joint. So to be very candid with you, if somebody can come up with a, with an amendment to add to this, to get it to where we can, we can have a report come back to us to where this money, where all the money that we're going to vote for would go to part-time people to make our, to make their salaries competitive to the hamburger joints. I, I think we're, I think we're doing a disservice if we just leave this. And, and I don't think it's this body's fault. I, I think this, I think this body has been trying to respond to a bunch of messes that have been made by this, by the library system. I, I don't, I don't take any blame for us doing this wrong, but this is just kind of the way it's fell out. And so I'd hate for us to leave here tonight and lock these part-time people in to $10.50 an hour and expect to be able to maintain quality of people in our libraries. I'd rather see us amend this and let it go to Human Resources and, and get a list of who the part-time people are. And then within the limitation of this amount of money, let us give part-time people raises where we can able to, where we can keep them. And everybody else in the county now has got this. The full-time people's already got it. Everybody else has got salary adjustment, except the part-time people for the libraries. Not fair. Now, if you want them to come back with a new number and tell you what that new number is, here is this many part-time people and we need this many dollars, that's okay. I don't care how we handle it. But, but I'd hate to see it die tonight because we're talking about, we're talking about real people. We're not talking about a bureaucracy where we're funding here. We're talking about real people that's not making enough money for the job they perform. So I don't know what kind of motion to make to get it to do that, but.
Well, we gotta do this motion to defer first.
Okay.
So, that's first. Okay. So, and Mr. Hinton, Ms. Dinnan informed me that it's already been to HR and they've tried to make those adjustments for part-time employees in this. There's already a list of the adjustments.
Well, does that, does that figure match the figure that we're talking out here about here, $261,277?
No, sir, that's outside. That 261 is to make the adjustments for all the other county employees that there were inaccuracies done with the pay plan when it was implemented. It might have been off 5% for somebody or 2% for someone else. So that kind of trues up all the other ones. Once we went through and fixed it, the library was not included in that number. Ms. Cheryl's already done it. She's already got the pay plan people. They put it together. HR's done it. So it's, it's been approved by HR and everyone else for what it would be for the libraries.
So it's done?
Yes, sir. So we just have to add it? They already have the number?
How much money did you, what's the number you said it was?
Let me, hey, let me, let me jump in here. Like, we're on a motion to defer. Let me come back to this conversation if we continue debate. Mr. Becker, did you want to speak on defer or on the main motion?
On the defer.
Okay.
So, help me understand, I apologize. So 220714, this replaces which, if I'm reading the minutes correctly, it failed to pass. So what, what is different, what's different from this resolution versus the 2207-14 that failed?
Okay, hang on. 2207-14 didn't fail to pass. It passed, but it didn't have 16 votes.
15 votes.
It, it had 15 votes, so it needed 16 to pass on one reading. So because of that, we've got to have a second reading.
Oh, okay. So, okay. It says failed to pass, unnecessary to, so it, so it just needed a majority?
It had a majority, but it needed a 2/3.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, that clears things. So I appreciate that. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Becker. Mr. Holt, do you want to speak on the main motion? You'll speak on defer?
Well, it's tied together. I don't want this deferred. I'm asking you not to defer this. I want you to realize, and I think Mr. Hinton touched on this, if we ignore these part-time people, it's going to cost us a lot more money as taxpayers. I won't be here. A lot of you won't be here. But remember, if we take two part-time people and make one full-time person, it automatically costs us more money. You got to pay them benefits. You got to pay them health insurance and retirement. And so really, what they're trying to do is to retain the people who want flexibility and want to work part-time. But, you know, if we don't start paying these people at least $15 an hour, we can't keep anybody. And, you know, I, I don't know about you, but if you work anybody, I can't find anybody to work, not even a farm laborer, that I pay less than $15 an hour. I, I probably wouldn't do that anyway because it's insulting. And I understand this is taxpayers' money, but we've got to be able to treat people in an equitable way. It's very difficult to hire people now. There's a labor shortage. It's going to continue to be a labor shortage. I asked you not to defer this. We need to address this because we're in a very competitive job market, and unfortunately, it's not going to get any better. And these are not people who are freeloaders. These are people who want to work. And, and we need to, we need to treat them with dignity. We need them. They actually are saving us money. So please consider voting for this and do not defer it. Thank you.
Mr. Hyde, do you want to speak on defer or do you want to speak on the main motion? Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Driver.
Mr. Chairman, I, I pretty much agree with a lot of what has been said here tonight. But I agree with Commissioner Mansfield and that I think it's sort of madness. We're doing, we're spending a lot of money between budget time. And we, we need to take care of things on the front end. Now, I realize that things come up during the year. However, this is August. We had a budget July 1. It's not been that long ago. We need to learn to address, I think, these problems at budget time. We spend an enormous amount of money on things that come up. This may be legitimate, and I may even vote for it. I know, I know it's a need. But I just don't.
I know, I know it's a need, but I just don't understand why we're operating the way we're operating. And I, I support deferral.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hyde. So let me clarify what we're voting on. It's not just that we added in, added back in the library portion. This would also catch EMS, Sheriff's Department, others who, there was an error in their calculations that we're trying to fix. So, Mr. Hinton, did you want to speak on defer? Are you on the main motion?
Yeah. If, if this was for a truck or a trailer or a building or fixing a roof and et cetera, I'd, I'd probably be making the same speech that some of the others are. But we're talking about in cases where you have part-time employees working when they're supposed to, to either supplement or make their own living working for the libraries of some county. This is, this is not some benefit like we need another truck to go with EMS. We need two lights on a patrol car instead of one, or we need a new bucket for a back hole out at the highway department. This is, when we vote this, when we stop doing this, there's real people that's going to be impacted by this, not a car dealership or not somebody that sells roofing tar. These are real people that, that we're literally deciding not to pay them what they ought to be paid. So just keep that in mind if you vote to not do it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hinton. All right, there's no one else in the queue. A yes vote is to defer. A no vote is to continue on the main motion. Let's vote.
Motion to defer is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote.
Oh, hey. I'm really late. It's like I cramped up or something.
Didn't pull the trigger.
With three affirmative votes, motion to defer fails to carry.
Okay, back on the main motion. I see no one in the queue. Let's vote.
Main motion, as stated, is on the board. Please record your vote.
You dinged yourself. Barely.
With 20 affirmative votes, resolution is approved on second and final reading.
Okay, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir. 2208-09, this is appropriating 1.5 million of state or half a revenue for election machines for the Sumner County Election Commission. I need to explain this. We've already approved the 1.5 million a while back. We did that months ago. What we're saying now is for Ms. Ashley to be able to tap into state money, they needed a PO purchase order beforehand to show the state and then the state would allocate it. There's 15 million in a fund for new voting machines. The large counties Shelby and Davidson are not applying for it. So we're one of the larger counties that are applying for it. What she's been told by the state is if we can produce the PO rather quickly, all of our money will be funded. We won't have to look at any other revenue sources. So what we're doing is we're not necessarily allocating new money. We're simply giving her a PO and saying that that PO will be used for the state funds and if the state funds don't come through, then she'll have to go back through. So, and I so move, sorry.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor is there a second? Second by Commissioner Ring. Mr. Mansfield?
So, I've not heard good things about the micro vote machines and I know this is not, this is still using the same company. It's a proposal of using some kind of basically like a receipt, which somebody spoke earlier tonight. I took notes and had some things printed off myself about the receipts being difficult to read, things like that. But main concern, there are only two states that use these machines, period. I think we're just approaching the wrong machines altogether and with issues of voting integrity we've had in the nation, there's a lot of states that have removed the micro vote from them. There's a lot of problems with the software and malfunctions and vulnerabilities that have not, that's not going to be corrected by this new paper trail that's proposed here. And so I just, I am not comfortable voting for these machines or pushing forward money for this. I definitely would like to have time to actually evaluate this more and look at alternate solutions. Murray County actually just voted to reject funding put forward for these machines for the same reason, so I'm going to move to defer this.
Point of clarification, though, I want to make sure you understand.
Hang on, hang on, let me get, let me let him finish, then I'll let you speak on it. Go ahead, Mr. Mansfield.
I'm going to move to refer any kind of authorization for PO or anything else, just the fact that I don't think we should be buying these machines based on concerns citizens have because there's been a lot of errors and mistakes with them. So my motion is to defer it back to, I guess, budget for September to review.
I just want to make sure, are you wanting to...
Hang on, hang on, hang on, sorry. Go ahead, he did.
Motion is to defer.
Okay, is there a second? Second by Mr. Hyde. All right, Commissioner Taylor?
Can we please clarify, Jeremy, are you wanting to defer it back because they're going to buy a micro vote or just in general? And the reason I say it is, you may want to clarify your motion and I'll get on this with Denham, but it's a bid process, so whoever gets the bid is, who gets the bid, we're not allowed to alter the bids after the fact. We can't deny funding or add funding where it was there before because we don't like the bid. So if you want to defer it, make sure you're deferring it for the right reason.
Okay, all right, thank you, Commissioner Taylor. Commissioner Ring, did you want to speak on defer?
Um, yeah, I'll speak on the main motion.
Okay, all right. Mr. Mansfield, do you want to say anything else on defer?
No.
Okay. Okay, all right, so we're debating defer, excuse me. This requires a majority vote, so a yes vote is to defer this to next month or future month. A no vote is to continue on the main motion.
Motion to defer is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote.
They're going to get sued a lot.
With five affirmative votes, motion to defer fails to carry. We're back on the main motion.
Okay, I see no one in the queue. Let's vote on the main motion. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Ring, Mr. Ring, I apologize. Go ahead, Mr. Ring.
Yes, sir, thank you. I was on the Election Commission prior to the new commission.
15, 18 years ago, something like that, we voted to, we looked at different types of machines and of the machines that the state had authorized, and that's what it has to be, they have to be authorized by the state. The machines the state had authorized, the micro, micro vote machine was by far the best machine. Now, I haven't seen any machines this year, so I don't, I can't tell you anything about that. But I will tell you that the micro, the micro vote machine is the best machine for people with disabilities. It was then and it is now. It's been approved by the Secretary of State's office, the state election coordinator. My understanding is that it has not been removed by any state, as, that's my understanding, and 46 counties in Tennessee currently use, currently use the micro vote. I believe that the micro vote's a fine machine from my experience with it and I support this and I support getting the micro vote machines unless there could be, there's evidence that there's a better machine out there. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Ring. Feel like I'm an assistant principal again.
Put your phone in jail.
All right, Mr. Mansfield?
Micro vote has been removed from the following nine states: Arkansas, Iowa, Kansas, Kentucky, Michigan, North Carolina, Ohio, Pennsylvania, and South Carolina. North Carolina, they were shut down when voters scrolled through ballots, causing votes to be lost. In Pennsylvania, these machines were shut down haphazardly, causing the current voter's vote to be lost. Software malfunction, incorrect unofficial results were reported. South Carolina, 1,500 more ballots accounted than the number of voters who signed in to vote in one county called Jasper County. Tennessee, Lawrence County, software malfunction prevented votes from being tallied. Putnam County, software malfunction resulted in none of the vote totals matching up with the correct candidates. Sumner County, a machine malfunction prevented 110 votes from being retrieved on election night for a Portland city election, as stated earlier. So even Indiana, where these machines are, there is a voter right organization in the home state of Indiana that issued a letter explaining why this new proposed system is a patch rather than a solution for the problems with these voting machines. Again, I would encourage us to defer this and not move forward on machines that are questionable and a lot of people are pulling out from using. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right, Mr. Hinton?
Can we buy, can we buy different voting machines for Sumner County than the other 94 counties that are stupider than we are? Can we be the one county out of 95 can have our own little voting machine?
I'm going to refer back to my previous comment about middle school AP.
I, I don't, I don't know how...
I would have quite options, why don't we have a beer on the side and use the whole one and a half of campus during the voting machine?
I don't believe it's going to, and I think, I think there's a law been passed that you got to, you got to print out, there's something added to this equipment is what the money's for, where it'll print out the records of the, I don't know. I don't know the details of it because this hurt a bit today.
That's correct.
But I don't know how much options we have, to be honest with you. I mean, deferred, referred, y'all can play with it all next year if you want to. I don't care. But, but I'm not too sure we'll get by with it because I think we got to have it.
We're back on the main motion. Defer, defer failed, so we're on the main motion. There's no one else in the queue. A yes vote is to approve the resolution, 2208-09. No vote is to reject it. Let's vote.
Resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote.
Dang. You smoked me on that one. Won't be too many more times.
With 18 affirmative votes, resolution is approved.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kemp. Mr. Taylor, we got 17, 25, and 28.
Yes, sir. 2208-17, appropriating additional funding and carryover fiscal year 2022 budget to fiscal year 2023 budget for the Sumner County Courthouse and Garage Projects and Capital Projects Fund. This is something we do every year when we have money for a long-term project. We carry it over from one year to the next. It's accounting purpose. I so move.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Taylor, second by Commissioner Foster. Mr. Mansfield?
This is something that should have come before Gen Ops. Gen Ops rarely meets. So, I mean, you get, there's been no updates on the, this courthouse parking garage. I know Gallatin got surprised with the bill for it for, I think, $600,000. I'm just concerned that why are we contributing another million dollars to this project, you know, after it's been approved? And again, we're precariously running out of money and funds for a lot of things that we have, that we're putting funds towards. So I don't think we need to be putting more money towards this. It looks like Gallatin, I guess, is putting 2.4 million, if I'm not mistaken, into this right now. But I, I just, I just disagree with us putting another million dollars into this project for this courthouse parking garage and so I'm going to be opposed to this.
Sorry, I apologize.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mansfield. All right, there's no one else in the queue. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
I have two no's. I have Mr. Hyde and Mr. Mansfield. Any other no's? Okay, motion passes by vote of 21 to 2.
2208-05, appropriating 130,000 for command vehicles for EMS. For last budget year, what we did was there were vehicles that couldn't be purchased because of chip shortages and we carried that money over. EMS did not get to do that. Just through an oversight, we want to correct that. So this is money that's been allocated before. We want to make sure that they still have that same money to buy two more vehicles. I so move.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Foster. Mr. Mansfield?
So when you're talking about command vehicles, can you please explain that? What do you mean by command vehicles?
Chief Miller's here if we want a detailed explanation or I can just tell you that it's a vehicle, it's, it's two different vehicles that they use to respond to scenes for command level staff.
Are these ambulances or are these...
Hang on, I'll get your answer, Mr. Smith. Chief Miller, could you answer that, please?
He'll probably do a lot better job than me.
Without objection, we'll get to Chief Miller.
Thank you. Good evening. Yeah, these are our command vehicles. We have a, typically it's a Ford F-250 with a camper top. They respond with our ambulances, especially in areas that are covered by volunteer departments if there's no response by the volunteers. They're equipped with the equipment that the lieutenants, the captains, the battalion chiefs, they utilize these things to establish command. The equipment is in there to handle mass casualty incidents as well as we respond to all active shooter and school shooter events with these types of vehicles. It was budgeted last year. We were unable to purchase them due to the chip shortage. At the end of this budget year, we handed back in over $430,000 and since July 1, we have cut an additional administrative position to help offset the burden that putting this back in. It's asked for for 130 due to inflation. I believe we could probably make those two purchases for 110, but we so desperately need it to continue to respond and be there to deliver the services to the citizens of this county.
Okay, thank you, Chief Miller.
In April and in June budget meeting, I asked for $150,000 for AED devices to equip Mo Taylor very well could have been here had there been one on a sheriff's car. I was told that that would be in this budget cycle and I don't know where it is. I asked David Lawing and he said it wasn't there, so...
You were also asked to provide the paperwork. We never got it.
All right, all right, this is off topic. Let's move.
Well, my point is, I, I think, in my opinion, you know, potentially saving lives with AED devices, I, I place that as a higher priority than two trucks.
There are AEDs on these trucks as well.
So I'm just asking because I was, I was told that would be a part of the process and it wasn't, so that's a priority of mine moving forward to this next commission is to equip our sheriff's deputy specifically to be able to take care of items like this. So just disappointed to see that's not a part of this process. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mansfield. Ms. Try.
Chief Miller, what are we using now? What vehicles are we using now?
We've got a 2011 Ford that has over 215,000 miles. And we've got three of our other Ford trucks that have been recalled this month. They were out of service having the drive shafts repaired, so there were several days that we didn't have those to respond, but we have a very aging fleet since we weren't able to replace last year and due to the chip shortage, we're looking at probably a, a seven to nine month delivery on any ones that we order now. The, with the vehicle age and mileage, they're just aging out.
All right, thank you, Chief Miller. All right, there's no one left in the queue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir. 2208-28, appropriating $77,181 from the general fund unassigned fund balance to do the retirement of the county law director. The reason we're doing this is as we've done before, Leah's leaving, but she's going to be on retainer to handle the current court cases we have because we couldn't have an attorney step in and do that properly. She'll go through the end of the year with that, so that's where the money went. The problem is we're bringing in a new law director and they're not going to have enough money to pay both at the same time. We've done this for several other departments where there's an overlap of an old employee with a new employee. This one's just a little bit different because it's a law director. Just asking this so that way the soon-to-be county mayor will be able to hire a law director at the appropriate rate. I so move.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Foster. Mr. Mansfield?
So the line item for this request for budget adjustment says terminal payout as an employee. And so, again, point last month, doing a, this is not an employee position if it's not a full-time position. And so the classification is wrong on this and we're paying social security and Medicare for somebody who's not an employee.
Mr. Mansfield, let me interrupt you for a second. That was last month's vote? This is for the new attorney, new county attorney?
No, it's not. It's for the current county attorney plus social security plus Medicare for the current county attorney. Totally, uh, over, you know, probably $65,000.
All right, so I stand corrected. There are some things that Mr. Lawing has to pay.
Not for a contract employee. The point is that I'm trying to make is...
Actually, you're incorrect. What David's doing, he has to do.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. Go ahead and finish your statement, Mr. Mansfield.
The point is the fact that it's, it's, so what is, as we're talking about an employee that the law director is, is, is she available 40 hours a week from September to December to help with a new commission or help with a new attorney? Because if this is just like making a phone call from a kitchen table, you know, I, I just don't agree with the salary amount, but the fact that it's being classified literally as salary because you're calling it an employee and you're giving social security and Medicare, this is not a 1099 contract position. This is a, a full-time employee position with full-time employee pay minus, I guess, retirement taken off the table. taken off the table. So I just think this is the wrong way of going about this, Mr. Chairman.
Is that a question, sir?
Did you have a comment?
I was asking if that was a question.
I don't, what, what comment would you like to make, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir. Simply put, that this resolution was prepared by Mr. Lawing, Ms. Denon, and was run by our HR director to make sure the wording was appropriate, that we met all the state guidelines and federal guidelines for it. It's correct.
Okay, all right, there's no one else in the queue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I've got Mr. Hyde and Mr. Mansfield. Any other noes? Okay, motion passes by a vote of 21 to 2. Hang on before everybody runs off. Did you want to say something, Mr. Graves? Are you just, okay.[1552.15][1552.15](Laughter) I know the, I know the hour is late, but I hope you'll humor me.
I just didn't want to get back.
Oh, no, 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 no. One last time, I'm going to snub Mr. Becker. No, Mr. Becker, financial management.
No report.
Okay.[1566.25][1566.25](Laughter) I apologize, Mr. Becker. Almost did it again. Thanks for waving. Hey, let me close before we, before we close out. I want to, I want to make it, this is my seventh year as chair and my last year on the commission. I can, you know, you never say never, but I can almost assure you that I will not be back as a commissioner again. It's been a wonderful eight years. There are so many people I'd like to thank. The friendships that we've made over the last eight years mean more to me than just about anything. We fought like brothers and sisters at times. We've been here way late at night sometimes, but through it all, I think everyone's contributed to do the very best for the county and to represent their constituencies. I want to thank everybody for their service. I want to thank Mayor Holt, who has, for quite a while now, has led Sumner County through a lot of storms, through a lot of good times, through a pandemic, through all kinds of everything that you can imagine. Mayor Holt, I want to thank you personally for your leadership and all that you've done. It really means a lot to me, the work that you've done. Mr. Kemp, I thought tonight, as you led the pledge for the last time up here, maybe not leading the pledge the last time, last time I do it from here, what, what an honor